...counsel concerning the hiring of the county manager. I've had a few questions. I know there's been some concerns why those district commissioners' names was listed in the agenda. Again, Commissioner Askew and I agreed to that because the agenda that is published seven days in advance is the agenda that is generated by the chairperson. So with the modification, I wanted the community to know why and who made the modification. And then also, we agreed the two-page document be added that was provided by Mr. Gerard. So Commissioner Askew reached out to Mr. Gerard before we made that final decision, and we got back on the phone a couple hours later. And so page 22 and 23 of the agenda are the two pages that was added in with the modification to the agenda. So this, I just wanted to give a little more explanation because this is the first time we've had this come up in our year and a half roughly, operating in our new form of government as a board. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Also, when Ken Gerard comes up and speaks and gives his presentation, we will have some dialogue with the board, with Mr. Gerard, to answer questions, have some board discussion on that, that y'all will all be here to be part of. Another thing we're going to do just a little bit different, because we know there's a lot of you here tonight that may have questions or would like to address the board on that issue. So we're going to allow anyone that would like to come up and speak to the podium to have five minutes to talk about that topic. So we're going to require you at that time to keep your comments concerning Mr. Gerard's presentation, or what's being presented or discussed by the board about this issue. You'll see at the bottom of the agenda, we have another time for public comment. So if there's anything else that you wanted to address the board with tonight, of any other government topic, that would be the time that we will allow you to have time to speak for five minutes. At that time, we're not going to allow anybody to address what we're going to talk about with Mr. Gerard's presentation. So we're going to divide this up. So anything that we're talking about with the county manager proposal will be done all at one time and that only. And then at the end, you'll have your five minutes to discuss and bring up any other topic you would like to bring up. Does that make good sense? I hope I'm clear on that. Also, we do have a public meeting here tonight on some zoning requests. And so that's a couple of the first two items that we've got under public hearings. We will hear those zoning requests. And then you'll see later in the agenda toward the bottom, the board will take up those items. So some of you that's not been to our meetings before, that's standard protocol. We listen and let public input on those. So we will allow people to speak then, but it will only be about that zoning issue. And anybody that's in favor or against those zoning issues can come and speak at that time. So also, I wanted to read, because I know this is many of y'all's first time, and I know there's a lot of people understands wanting to speak tonight. So back on, let's see, February the 11th, 2021, the board entered into Resolution R. 7-21. And I'm going to save you from all the whereas's and just get to the meat of this, but this is a decorum on public participation at meetings and the rule of order for that. So it says, "Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia hereby adopts the following provisions for public participation at meetings." So this would cover any time you would come up and speak tonight. Number one, public comments, an agenda item of each regular meeting shall be reserved for comments from the public. All members of the public who wish to address the board must first be recognized by the chair to speak. Comments shall be made from the podium and begin with the speaker's name and the topic of their comments. A citizen speaker may be allotted up to five minutes, and we do have a clock up here, to make their comments, but may only speak once. And again, we've got a provision that you will have an opportunity to speak twice, but on different issues. Their comments must be limited to their choice topic. Once the citizen speaker completes his or her comments of the allotted time expires, they should return to their seat. A citizen speaker may not cease his or her time, or concede, excuse me, should not concede his or her time to another person. Any group of organization present for public comments shall designate a spokesperson. Decorum. Members of the public shall not make inappropriate or offensive comments at the board meetings and are expected to comply with the rules of decorum that exist for the Board of Commissioners per Robert's Rule of Order. Furthermore, citizen speakers shall refrain from the following. A. Remarks which are vulgar, obscene, profane, including but not limited to racial slurs or sexual endos. B. Personal attacks on individuals or groups. C. Remarks which incite violence. Three. Individuals who violate any rules of the board may be ruled out of order by the chair or on the point of order made by a district commissioner. In the event a citizen speaker is ruled out of order, the remainder of his or her time may be forfeited. In addition, an individual who violates the rules of decorum may be removed from the meeting at the discretion of the chair. So I know we've got a lot of people here tonight. I know it's crowded. I know this meeting may get long. But y'all remember, this is one of the freedoms that we get to come take part of. And we should be professional and courteous to each other and value and cherish this right that we have to come speak to our government face-to-face in public. So I just ask for your respect. You can make your comments and make your points without being ugly. So thank you for that. This time, we'll get back on to the course of our agenda here. We do have for the approval of the agenda, do we have a motion of the board to approve this agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented tonight. Next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes, approval of the minutes of the regular scheduled meeting that was held here in this building on May the 12th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. The minutes have been provided in the packet, was issued out one week ago today. Does any board member have any corrections, concerns, or modifications to the minutes as presented by the clerk? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk?
Motion to approve the minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented by the clerk. Okay, keeping with our agenda, we do have our public hearing. First item that we have is Kerry Davis requests a rezon from A. 1 to R. 2 for property located at 9391 West Highway 136, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax map and parcel number 0-255-007B. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this request for rezon? Any opposition on this one? Hearing or seeing no one, is there anyone here that wants to speak in favor of this? If you'd like to speak in favor, if you're the owner of the property, you don't have to speak, but it is your time if you would like to address the board. Anyone in favor? Okay, hearing none, we will move to the next public hearing item. Eugene Hester requests a partial rezon from R. 2 to C. 1 for property located at 126 Black Circle Spur at Highway 27, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map and parcel number 0-329-1-021A. Is anyone here that would like to speak in opposition of this request? Any opposition to this request? Hearing or seeing none, is there anyone here that wants to speak on behalf or in favor of this request? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium, and please state your name for the record, and the floor is yours.
Eugene Hester. Well, I've done get rezoned on this property. I didn't have my plaque or drawing cards on it, so I didn't really have everything in order now, though. So I just, I wanted to get this before the board.
Okay, so if you would like to hand that to Mr. Blake Moore, you can look at that and pass it down. So can you describe a little bit, give us an overview of what you've got going on here?
Yeah, we're wanting a rezon for commercial to, for storage, either for boats, RV storage, and maybe in the future for storage units, which would be on down the road.
Okay. Any board member have any questions or comments about this? So your property on here, which one of these tracks is yours?
I don't, all of it, but the front part of it, I had to have it. That's the section we're wanting rezoned.
Track one?
Track one, yes.
Okay. So you live on track two?
Yes, sir. It's my, my daughter's taking that, yes. And the part around it, she will get that property too.
Okay.
Just track one is what we're wanting rezoned.
Any other questions, comments from the board on this?
Sure.
Anything additional you'd like to add?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else on this issue, either for or against, that would like to speak on this rezon request at Black Circle Spur? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on with our agenda. And I'll read this. It says, "Request by District One Commissioner Robert Blake Moore and District Two Commissioner Mark Askew to modify the original published agenda to hear a presentation by Attorney Ken Gerard, secondary counsel concerning the hiring of a county manager." Mr. Gerard, the floor is yours.
Mr. Chairman and board members, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be in Walker County today, to all of you citizens as well. Thank you for having me. This is my first time to be in front of the Walker County Board of Commissioners as the Board of Commissioners, even though I have been appointed as your standby counsel. And so thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Gottlieb. Pleasure to be in front of you as well. So very quickly, because this is my first time, and given that we've never really had a formal introduction as, as part of the community, I thought I would at least introduce myself. So my law firm is called Gerard and Davis. It is located in Forsyth County, and I am a local government lawyer, and that's, that's all I do. I have multiple attorneys that work for me, and I've been practicing since 1995, so I've been representing governments for around 27 years now. I, my law firm, better stated, is the, serves as the county attorneys for Forsyth County, Dawson County, Cherokee, Barrow, Newton Counties, Jackson County, Green County, Quitman County, and as the chair noted, standby counsel for Walker County. I also serve as a city attorney for Alpharetta, the city of Milton, Fayetteville, and Stone Mountain. And also, really, sort of what I otherwise do is go to other counties throughout the state and sort of help them on an ad hoc or an as-needed basis. So that is sort of my practice. In a nutshell, I'm also on the ACCG, Associated County Commissioners of Georgia litigation panel. So I spend a lot of time litigating on behalf of governments, and I speak a lot, and I train a lot for governments, including the Carl Vinson Institute of Georgia, the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, something called COAG, which is the Constitutional Officers Association of Georgia, GATO, the Georgia Association of Tax Officials, GLGPA, GLRMS. I could, anyway, I speak a lot, is the bottom line. And so again, it's a pleasure to be here, and I hope that you're able to use the information that I'm going to provide this evening, because again, that is what I have been asked to do with respect to Walker County. You have able, very able counsel to serve you. I am truly on a standby basis. And so I'm sort of just pulled out. When the fire alarm is pulled, I come, I do my deal, and then I go back, back to Forsyth. So again, it's a pleasure to be here. The agenda item this evening, as I understand it, and as has been made very clear to me, is an informational-only agenda item. This is to facilitate discussion, information to the community, as well as information to the board, as well as others. And so that is the way I'm going to frame my discussion this evening. I have provided to the board, I did not make enough copies for everybody, forgive me for that, but I've provided to the board a little packet of exhibits, and these are of course part of the record this evening, so the public would have a right to view these. There's nothing mysterious about them at all. They're basically documents that many of you may be familiar with anyway. The topic we're here about today is the, again, a discussion about the creation of an office of county manager in Walker County. And again, I was not given really any direction on how to frame this proposal tonight, or this discussion tonight, and so I have taken upon myself to do it this way. I hope it's effective. So I thought the first thing we might want to do, and again, if you want to look at tab one of your packet, is to talk about where we are. It's always nice to begin to know where we are before we know where, where we are going or where we want to go. So as this board is all too familiar with, for decades, Walker County was a sole commissioner county. And then of course, I think it was in 2018, there was in fact a referendum that was held, that was a function of a local act of the General Assembly. And that, that's a couple of important points right there. The General Assembly creates two sorts of laws. They create general laws, which have application to the entirety of the state. That's general laws, and many of you may know them by the nomenclature of the OCGA, the Official Code of Georgia Annotated, followed by some numbers. So whenever you see that, you can know that that is a, that is a general law that has statewide application, applicable to all 159 counties in the state of Georgia. But in 2018, the General Assembly adopted what's called a local act, or a local law. Those are also adopted by the General Assembly, but they only have applicability to a single jurisdiction, whether it's a county or perhaps a municipality. And that's what they adopted, and that was to convert Walker County, which used to be one of the few remaining bastions of the sole commissioner model in Georgia, into a board model. And in fact, that was put on the agenda, as I understand it, or excuse me, the referendum in November of 2018. And as I also understand it, it passed by around an 80% vote, is what I seem to understand, which was a clear, resonating signal that the people of Walker County wanted a multi-headed Board of Commissioners to in fact be the governing authority of your jurisdiction. That's another buzzword we're going to be talking about this evening, is the notion of the governing authority. Whenever you see that in law, in general statutes, or in local acts, the governing authority, that's the Board of Commissioners. That's you. All right, so our first tab is simply your enabling legislation. So enabling legislation is that local act that we talked about. That was in fact what the voters ratified in 2018, set it in motion, a series of elections. I believe the actual election for the first slate of board members was in November of 2020, and then your first board actually set on January 1st of 2021, which is when they were sworn in and would have been able to take office. So the enabling legislation, which is, think of it in a city context, is a charter, so, but it's enabling legislation in the context of a county, sets up this system. First of all, you've got an elected at-large chair, obviously, and then you have four board members that are elected from specific jurisdictional districts. The enabling legislation sets forth various specific powers that are provided to the chair, and those are all set forth in this first tab. And if you will turn with me, and again, you don't need to, if you don't want to, but I'm just for purposes of sort of walking you through this, Section 10 are the duties of the chair, and they are set forth with some specificity in the enabling legislation, what we're calling the charter, but it's the enabling legislation. The chair is authorized to, number one, and again, this is set forth with specificity, first of all, to administer the affairs and day-to-day business of the county. Number two, just like chair is doing this evening, to preside over the meetings that you're doing. Call the meetings to order, which I noted that you did. You, in fact, the chair, get to prepare a proposed agenda, represent the county its ceremonial functions, submit motions made and seconded to the full board for action, which I noted that you were doing this evening, as per the enabling legislation. It provides that you can appoint members and chairpersons to committees, spend not more than $25,000 without Board of Commissioners' approval, and submit a proposed budget to the full Board of Commissioners. I do not mean to suggest by reading that list that that is completely exhaustive of the chair's duties, but that is a nice snapshot as set forth in the enabling legislation. Your enabling legislation also contains additional ways and functions of your government. For instance, it's your enabling legislation that dictates what a quorum is. And of course, the first thing the chair did this evening was make sure there was in fact a quorum here. And I was making note of that, because it is in fact the existence of a quorum that allows the Board of Commissioners to actually conduct an open meeting and to in fact take action. Without a quorum, you have no power. Your enabling legislation dictates that three district members of the board constitute a quorum, or two district members and your chair constitute a quorum for the conduct of business. Then the enabling legislation shifts gears, and then it talks about the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners' duties are broad. The Board of Commissioners has the power to levy taxes, which you do when you set, for instance, the millage as part of your budget cycle. You have the ability, on behalf of the citizens of Walker County, to make appropriations, spend money vested in the Board of Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners has the authority to incur debt, to authorize and execute contracts, build, construct, maintain, repair roads and county infrastructure, to exercise all the powers of the sole commissioner within the context of zoning, which you've already started to do that this evening by way of a public hearing pursuant to the zoning procedures law. And then later in this, in this agenda, you will in fact probably take action of some kind with respect to those zoning items. Your enabling legislation provides that it's the Board of Commissioners that has the power to determine the priority of capital improvements. 16 under your list of duties is, is interesting to me. The Board of Commissioners is empowered to exercise all of the power and authority formally vested by law in the sole commissioner of Walker County, together with the power and authority which may be delegated by law to the governing authority of the county. Remember, I said we hit that word again, governing authority, which is you. And you also have, this is near and dear to my heart, obviously, you have the power to appoint legal counsel, which is obviously a very important power. That's, anyway, near and dear to my heart. In addition, if you'll take a look at Section 13 of your enabling legislation, "The Board of Commissioners is uniquely empowered with the ability to affect the internal organization of the county government." Says this, "The internal organization of the county government shall be established and altered by the board. Existing departments may be abolished, their functions transferred to other departments, additional departments may be created, and any two or more departments may be consolidated." In addition to all of these powers that are set forth in your enabling legislation, the governing authority of Walker County is also vested with those powers and authorities that are given by Article 9, Section 2 of the Georgia Constitution. You are also given those powers that are provided by the supplementary powers clause of the Georgia Constitution. And you are also given those functions and powers that are provided by general law that are given to all county governments in the state of Georgia. The Board of Commissioners of Walker County, like every other board that I work with, is a powerful organization, directly having the ability to affect the day-to-day lives of its citizens. All right, so that is where we are. That's what you have today. What we're here to talk about, if you'll turn to Tab 2, is a general law. Remember, we talked about a general law is a law that has applicability throughout the state. All 159 counties in the state of Georgia have the ability, if they need to, to use this law. And it is OCGA, Official Code of Georgia Annotated, 36522, and the title is County Manager. Here's what it says. It says, "The governing authority," again, that's you, "the governing authority of any county of this state may create in and for those counties in which it deems advisable or advisable the office of county manager." That's one. "And you may vest in that office such powers, duties, and responsibilities of an administrative nature." And I will come back and revisit some of this language in a little bit. The qualifications, this is the statute, continuing on with the statute, "The qualifications, methods of selection, appointment, compensation, tenure, and such other related matters pertaining to the office of the county manager shall be provided for, once again, by the governing authority of the county." That's you. So that is the statute that we are here to talk about this evening. And again, I just want to emphasize that it is a general law. It is nothing unique to Walker County. And in fact, I can tell you, I have firsthand experience that other counties that I work in have in fact utilized this power to create a county manager position. Now, the notion that this county manager will perform the duties and responsibilities of an administrative nature, literally defined, administration means the process or activity of running a business organization. And make no mistake, a county government is a business organization. How many employees does Walker County have? 400?
27.
It is a, it is a corporation. Now, obviously, it is a governmental enterprise. It is a governmental corporation, but it is a significantly large corporation. This statute is a tool. It is a tool provided by the General Assembly to allow county governments like Walker County to discuss, share information, and then make an informed decision as to whether creating the office of the county manager is in the best interest of the citizens and residents of Walker County. The General Assembly has done this for a variety of reasons. Number one, I believe they have done it because they want to ensure that governments throughout Georgia are given the opportunity to create the most professional governments that they can create. That's number one. Number two, I believe, that at least with respect to the discussion in this context, it may be to relieve the administrative burden that is currently being borne by the chair. Number three, and this is my view of the law, I also believe it was done, this statute was put in place, to take some of the burden off the General Assembly. The General Assembly really is good about knowing where they continually get asked to change local legislation, or to change the acts creating local boards. And one of them was in the creation of the county manager. And so the General Assembly said, "You know what? We're not going to require you to rush down to the Gold Dome in Atlanta at the beginning of every session if you want a county manager. We're going to decide that county boards of commissioners are going to be vested with the authority to create this position on their own." They've done this in a couple of areas. The county manager is one of those areas where they've done that. They've also done it, by the way, in the context of board compensation. And I know we're not here to talk about compensation, we're not here to talk about board compensation. I'm simply using that as an example of, the General Assembly got really weary of every January, board members would go down to the, to the Gold Dome and say, "Would you raise our pay?" And so eventually, they adopted a general law that allows counties to raise their pay locally. The General Assembly knows how to do that, and that's what they've done with respect to the county manager statute. If you take a look with me very quickly for Tab 3. So this, I could, I could sit here and, and tell you, when we talk about the county manager having administrative functions, I could tell you what I think that means, because I deal with county managers every day. But rather than me do it, I thought I would put in this slide, if you will, this page, from the ACCG County Commissioner Handbook. So this is from an ACCG, Association County Commissioners of Georgia handbook, which is sort of the legislative lobbying arm for county governments throughout Georgia. They write this book that is basically the bible for county governments. And here's what it says, "A manager or administrator is the chief administrative official of the county and is responsible for the day-to-day operations of the county." And I raise that to you because I mean, I want this to be a candid, open dialogue. Right now, your enabling legislation vests the day-to-day operations of the county in your chair. This creation- This creation of the county manager position would vest those duties in the county manager. And of all the duties that I referenced with respect to the Chair, you remember when I was going through all of them, one by one by one of all the duties of the Chair? That is the one that would be modified by the creation of a county manager, because the day-to-day administrative functions of the currently of the Chair would be then transferred to the county manager. The duties of this official, again, I'm reading from the ACCG book, "Whether he or she is called a county manager or an administrator are usually numerous and varied. In some counties, these duties include the appointment and removal of county employees. Additional duties that might fall into the duties of a county manager or administrator include supervising the conduct of county employees, administering county laws, ordinances, and resolutions, exercising control over county departments and agencies, preparing a budget, informing the governing authority about financial conditions, et cetera, et cetera." The beauty of the flexibility that is afforded by Georgia law is, is you don't have to ascribe all of those duties to a county manager. You can limit them. And in this context, at least the way I have conceived it, it would simply be an administrative function only. All right, so that is the, from the ACCG guidebook. If you'll turn with me very quickly to the next tab, which is Tab 4. Because a reasonable question would be, how pervasive, how widespread is this notion of having a professional administrator run the government? And I wanted to at least answer that, because it is a fair question to ask, and it deserves to be answered. So in Tab 4, what we did, Georgia, as you know, has 159 counties. Only roughly 29 counties out of 159 do not use, do not use some sort of a professional administrator in a managerial or administrative capacity. Walker County, based upon the 2020 census, has a population of roughly 69,000, knocking on the door of 70,000 individuals. Of the 29 counties in Georgia that do not use a dedicated county administrator or county manager professional as their administrative leader, of those 29 counties, only two in Georgia have populations greater than Walker County, and those two counties are Carroll County and Rockdale County. All of the other counties that, again, do not have a county manager or county administrator or some form of a professional administrative class are very small, all the way down to Telfair, 1,587 individuals. So they tend to be of a smaller variety of county. Now, you may then reasonably ask, "Well, okay, that's fine, and that's statistics, and that's information, but what's the rationale? Why is the county manager or the county administrator form or office so important?" Here's what I can tell you, having done this for 27 years and represent a lot of governments on a day-to-day basis, and that is why you retain me as your secondary, secondary counsel. And I hope that that's the value that I can provide to you with that experience. The reason the General Assembly has made this statute available to counties is because we live today in a heavily, heavily regulated environment, where the laws controlling governmental operations are complex, they are nuanced, and they can expose the county to liability. This government is a corporation. Now, again, I say what I said the first time. It is a transparent, citizen-focused corporation that wields the power of taxation. Some people, when I'm teaching these classes, ask me, "Is one of the highest goals of a county government to be efficient?" And I will say, "No, it is not." If you want efficiency, go work for Chick-fil-A. They can throw one up in a weekend. It's the darnedest thing I've ever seen. But if you, the highest ideal of a government is transparency and accountability, because you are spending other people's money. And because of that, accountability and transparency, you are stewards of the government, uniquely required to look out for the best interests of your citizens and the money that we collect from them in taxes. I spend my days dealing with litigation that is based on employment cases, civil rights cases. I have to deal with people that are making hiring and firing decisions. I deal with Equal Employment Opportunity Commission complaints, civil rights complaints, compensation concerns. Professional administrators have to deal with benefits, state and federal grants, environmental compliance, state and federal mandates on workers' compensation, Americans with Disabilities Act, Title VII, Fair Labor Standards Act, age discrimination, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. This is a challenging regulatory environment, and that is why I believe a lot of governments have decided that a professional manager of some sort is preferable. It's not mandated. I want to be very clear. I'm going to be extraordinarily honest in any question I get. It is not mandated, but I am suggesting to you that it is the trajectory in Georgia. Now, where does that leave us? If, and that is a big if, because, again, this is informational only, if Walker County were to utilize 36522 and create a county manager office to handle the administrative functions, then the way I view it, and again, the way I view it can be undone, okay? But you retained me for my information and knowledge on this issue, so I have prepared this, but it can be modified. But if you were to use this, the way I would view the county manager in this sort of a situation in Walker County is this, the county manager would administer the day-to-day operations of the county, including the hiring, firing, and discipline of county staff. The county manager would make recommendations to the Board regarding hiring, terminations, department creations, and consolidations. Remember, I've already talked to you that the enabling legislation gives the Board of Commissioners ultimate control over the internal affairs of the way the departments should be structured, combined, terminated, et cetera, but the county manager would give you recommendations on that. I would suspect the county manager would work closely with the Chair in making those recommendations. The county manager would exercise administrative authority over county departments and personnel, manage the purchasing of supplies and materials, serve as a liaison between the Board and the public by responding to inquiries and potentially resolving conflicts that the public may have with the county, attend meetings of the Board and brief Commissioners on certain issues, not all, but some, conduct meetings with department heads to ensure the overall goals and objectives of the counties are realized, and perform related duties. What would that leave for the Chair? Preside over the meetings of the Board as the enabling legislation contemplates, call the meetings of the Board to order, prepare a proposed agenda, as was done here, represent the county government at ceremonial functions, submit motions that are made and seconded to the Board. Again, these are all the rules we've already talked about. These are already the powers the Chair has. Appoint members and chairpersons to committees, perform such duties as are delegated to the Chair by the Board, spend not more than $25,000, vote in instances of a tie, institute a system of allotments of all monies appropriated and budgeted. In addition, I believe the Chair would also have these additional duties. I believe they would be in consultation with the county manager, but at the end of the day, I believe the Chair would be the ultimate source of authority for these final list of duties. Number one, submit annually to the Board a proposed budget. That is a very, very important function that every county in Georgia needs and needs it to be performed well. The submission of a budget is part of your legislative act. Approving a budget is approving a plan. Approving a budget is approving what you expect the next fiscal year to look like, and he or she who approves the budget has a tremendous amount of power. He or she who puts together the budget has a tremendous amount of power. The Chair, in consultation with the county manager, would provide a financial report to the Board of Commissioners each month, develop a budget plan, prepare and direct the implementation of a five-year capital improvement plan, direct the development and implementation of short and long-range plans, and assist the Board in the development of the county strategic plan. Could all of those duties be rearranged? Yes. However, I will stay by my recommendation that the county manager, should you choose to go that path, can only take on administrative functions, not executive functions, administrative functions, which is why I've at least attempted to make it carefully designed in that way. Now, there will obviously be some overlap of these functions. Georgia law is not really designed where people work in silos. There is an expectation of reasonableness, of decency, of decorum, and of cross-communication. So when I start reading all of those lists and sort of assigning them to people, it would be foolish to suggest that all of those would be undertaken in a vacuum. There will be a whole lot of symbiotic relationship between the county manager and the Chair and the Board, and that would just be something that would organically occur. It can't help but occur. Now, in wrapping up, so we've talked about where we are, we've talked about what the General Assembly has authorized you to do within the context of the creation of this Office of the County Manager. How it would occur, that is Tabs 5 and 6. But how it would occur is up to you. It may not occur. If the Board of Commissioners doesn't want to move forward, the Board of Commissioners has no obligation to move forward. But if you do move forward, how you do it is actually remarkably easy. I believe it takes a two-step process. The first would be to put the resolution that I have prepared, resolution is just a formal manifestation of the will of the Board. So put that resolution on an agenda. The resolution would create the Office of the County Manager. I would recommend that if you create the Office of the County Manager, there be an attachment to that resolution that contains the job description of the county manager. And I also recommend that if you are going to create the Office of the County Manager, that at the same time, you modify the enabling legislation of Walker County, the charter. Not in a significant way, but my concern would be that if you create a county manager with administrative functions, and your enabling act says the administrative functions vest in the Chair, then I believe you have built in a conflict. So my recommendation would be that if you're going to do that, if you're going to approve a resolution creating the county manager, at the same time, you built in some language into your enabling legislation such that there's no conflict. You take the conflict out. To do that, for a Board of Commissioners to change its own enabling legislation, you have the authority to do that under the Georgia Constitution, you have to approve the resolution at two back-to-back regular meetings. The reason for that is to ensure that the public has every right to know, and it cannot be action taken hastily. That's why the General Assembly, or, forgive me, it's not the General Assembly, the Georgia Constitution requires that a resolution of that type be approved at two back-to-back meetings. Once that is accomplished, the rest is real easy. Once you have approved that resolution, then you would simply recruit or hire, you would need to set compensation, and then the individual, he or she, would begin to work for you. That's how that would work. Mr. Chairman, board members, you all have been more than decent in allowing me to speak. I appreciate it. I'm here for any questions. I'd be happy to answer them.
Should we open it up to the Board for questions?
I've got, I don't know if it's necessarily a question or a statement. Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Gerard. Very informational, and that's, as you know, that's what we were attempting to do, was get some information to look at options of enhancing our form of government so that we can move things in a timely fashion. We've been convening for a year and a half now, and the reason that everybody's here and the reason we're talking about this is that, like you've just pointed out, the Board puts in policy procedure, and the Chairman sees that that policy procedure is adhered to as per the Enabling Act.
Yes.
Well, the Board has been slow-walked on some things at the admission of the Chair. The Chair's openly admitted that he has slow-walked some of the direct decisions the Board has made. So I want y'all to understand, we're here to try to enhance and move forward. We're not here to create a county manager. We're here to look at options that will help this Board and the elected members of this Board service the folks who have elected us. And we cannot do that when we put forth policy, we put forth procedure, and it's ignored or drug or slow-walked. Now, that's the facts, and that's why we're here. I don't have a lot to get into, I'm not going to get into particulars unless we need to. And if any other Board members want to have anything they'd like to add to it, I would surely welcome them to speak up too, because it's not that we're trying to do, we're not trying to hoodwink or do anything behind the backs of any citizens. It's an open meeting for anybody to be here, to listen to options that are already out there by law, that were there before the Board was committed, that were created, and will be there if the Board's not here. These are options that are Georgia law, and we just wanted to bring these to ours, we wanted to understand them, first of all, and also bring them out to the attention of the public for consideration and thinking about. There's not any action taken, there's not even any consideration of an action at this time, but it's high time, after a year and a half and over 30 meetings, and we've made decisions, we've put forth policy, and in the defense of our Chair, and I'm going to go out on a limb here, and it's too much for a county our size, now that we have a Board of five feeding into one. When we had the sole Commissioner, everything ran through one person. We've got a Board of five now, and four of us represent districts. And when the citizens come to us with complaints, concerns, ideas, whatever, it's our duty, it's our responsibility as elected officials to bring them to the Board. We bring them, we discuss them, we make decisions, we pass it along, and then it sits there. So all we're trying to do is explore options, and there are other options available out there, I'm sure, without going into the Enabling Act and not changing the form of government. The form of government was voted on as a Chair/Board. That's what we're going to have. But we've hit a bottleneck. Everything's come into one bottleneck. Not blaming anyone, it's no one's fault, it's just the facts of the matter. And so we're just trying to look at options and take into consideration the thoughts of the citizens to see what we can do to continue moving Walker County forward and to give the citizens the type of service and the timely manner that you taxpayers, us taxpayers deserve. That's all I have to say. I appreciate your time.
Yeah, I just appreciate everybody coming out and being involved, but our main goal here is for you guys, to better serve you guys. If our hands are tied behind our back, we can't do our job. That's why we're looking at other options. Thank you.
I want to make a comment. Mr. Gerard, thank you for coming. Thank you very much for being here. And I think my comments, Mr. Gerard being here, I can sum up in one word, and that word is frustration. I think personally, I feel as though I have been frustrated as a district commissioner, feeling as though some days I am just not effective on my job because of being stonewalled on simple projects. Poor, underscore, poor communication, poor communication with this Board, not being involved in key decision-making for this county, for you citizens. And I think those are important topics. That is why this Board is frustrated. And I'm going to take a moment just to cite a couple of examples. One of the biggest issues that confronts this county and this Board is animal control and animal shelter issues. We decided over a We decided over a year ago, a year, that we wanted to combine animal control and animal shelter. And down the road, we kicked the can and kicked the can, and it was finally, came out of executive session one evening, and we took an action. And that action is still sitting on our Chair's desk. Still sitting there. I, I, I'm going to take a moment to cite another couple of examples, and I'll be brief. But this Board has not been privy to information sharing on certain new hires. A hire for our Economic Development Community Outreach. We saw resumes, the next thing we know, we'd hired someone. It was a good hire, she's doing a great job, but we were not communicated with regarding that hire, and that's frustrating. Another one, a position was created for a facilities manager. A facilities manager. We were given the person's name, their background, the fact that they had worked for Whitfield Oil for numerous years, and subsequently, I was told from a citizen, I'm sorry, I'm an employee, that that person had been hired. And our motto on hiring new people is experience, training, and education. Important on new hires for a position that they're being hired for. We felt like this individual had none of those. Frustrating. I go back to my word, frustrating. And other topics that, that I could raise, I'm trying to keep it brief, but I hope you can hear in my voice and, and see with my expressions, and this is a G-rated audience, damn frustrated. And I'll leave it at that unless one of my other Commissioners want to make a comment, but thank you for your time and thank you for being here.
I got a question from Mr. Gerard. So, Gerard, I'm sorry. So, the counties in a state our size, seventy thousand, how many of them have a full-time Chair and also a County Manager? Or do you know that?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. The, the, the full-time Chair model is probably not the most pervasive model in Georgia, but there are certainly other instances of it. In fact, I represent some of them. I believe that Barrow was a full-time Chair as well.
The ones you represent, do they have a County Manager also or no?
Typically, they have an administrative assistant. Yeah, someone, someone to help the administration as well.
And, and just to be clear, when you're talking about this and you call it a manager/administrator, that, that, that position, if, if chosen to be created, could be exactly that, could be an assistant to administration or what, along those lines?
That's right, and that's what, the point I wanted to emphasize is there's no magic bullet here. In other words, there's no lockstep, they have to do this. The key is, is the statute that I am here to talk about allows the creation of the county manager to perform administrative functions. What those administrative functions are would be up to you. But that's why I wanted to read that laundry list out of the ACCG Bible, that, you know, typically, the, the standard administrative sort of functions are the hiring and firing, the personnel component of it, the firing, the hiring, the discipline, those things, and then the recommendations to the Board of Commissioners with respect to internal realignment, reorganization, or consolidation of departments. Those are the sorts of administrative functions we're talking about. And again, if we go further down the road on this, I would, I would hope that we might have a work session or some other sort of a meeting where we could flesh exactly what you are looking at, because at the end of the day, you're in charge, and you would need to tell me how you want this to look, but it would be of an administrative variety. Yes.
One, one last question that I have, and I'll, I'll hush. Having tried to explain to you guys and the folks on Facebook Live or whatever, the citizens of Walker County, why you're here, because there was, it was obviously some misinformation or some confusion to think that we were making a move tonight, that we were going to fix and hire a county manager without talking, and so there was obviously some confusion. So, I wanted to clarify that. I also want to clarify, and I want, I want to acknowledge, we, we know, and the Board knows for, and has known for quite some time, that things were being held back or slow-walked. I want to ask the Chair if he'll admit that he has intentionally slow-walked some of the Board's wishes and direction. Yes or no answer?
Be happy to address that. There's been two items for the betterment of this county that I have been slow-walking for your protection and for animal protection. One thing that I wanted to share with y'all here tonight, because this has been, been brought up and been asked, so this may help some of you on some of your questions. As Mr. Gerard's very much stated, he was hired as secondary counsel for this Board, and this is on our website, if you want to search this, this is Resolution R-005-21, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a county attorney and stand by counsel. So, some people have, have called me and said, when was this done, and how much are they being compensated, and who's paying that? So, when this was adopted, this was a three-one vote at that time, and it was on January 21st of 2014, that $200 per hour to Gerard and Davis as billed for services at, over those times. And so, that was put in place in January of 2021. Back in February 2010, and this is also on our website, we have a really nice setup on our website of, through MuniCode, of searchable documents, so you could pull up and pull up the February 10th, 2022 Agenda Packet in minutes. This is what Mr. Stoltz was speaking of. It, after we come out of executive session at 9:02 PM on February the 10th, Commissioner Stoltz made the motion and request of the Chairman and the Human Resource to formulate a consolidation plan for the Animal Control and Animal Shelter Departments. This plan is to include an organizational chart of the staff and any job descriptions that need to be modified, as well as a tentative date of implementation. His request for information be provided to the Board of Commissioners during the regular scheduled meeting on March the 10th, 2022, for review and discussion. Commissioner Blake Moore seconded the motion, four yes, zero no. So, it was 100% unanimous motion that was passed. Also, you can look, because that was said by March the 10th. On March the 10th is the Agenda Packet and the attachments, and there was discussion. There was no action taken, it was discussion. And in that discussion, you will find in the Agenda Packet, to make it simple for you, starting on page 34, is the proposed, suggested organizational chart. Next is a comparison of the budget showing the Animal Control, Animal Shelter combined budget, and a new projected budget that you can look at. Also, staff positions, what those positions would be, and the salaries for those, or if they were hourly or salary, and a proposed layout of that in a grand total. Also, a couple of programs, as far as spay and neuter, community cat programs addressing or attempting to address community cats, or feral cats as they're known. Also, additional responsibilities for animal control. After our response, we get a lot of questions on severely sick and interdomestic animals, animal bites, vicious animals, livestock at large, cruelty. Those things were talked about and addressed. The benefits of spay and neuter. The, the new position of, oh, excuse me, the, the modified job description for an animal control manager in detail that would show that job description. Also, in this, Animal Service Director is what my proposal was, the consolidation of the two departments, to have an Animal Services Director. Their complete job description that was being proposed is laid out for that job. Also, the, you know, the Animal Service Director, and, and then the other job descriptions were already in place for those jobs. So, this was discussed in the public meeting. It was, there was no action to be taken, but I was later told in executive session, they didn't like any of it. They asked me to go back and work on that, and as I've said, it's still sitting on my desk. But as the Board, being the legislative body, they could have proposed something as well at any time as well.
No, you're wrong, Shannon.
You're, you're out of order. Hold on, you're out of order. I've got the floor. I've got the floor.
Slow down a minute. You ain't answered the question.
I'm, I'm working here. Hold on. Hold on. So, with that, to answer the question, what I've been slow-walking is that has been laying on my desk, because there's been other things going on, and also, it's my understanding that there's Board members that have a desire to replace our Animal Shelter Manager, which is one of the most hard-working people in our organization. Also, there's issues and concerns about euthanizing of animals as well. We have worked real hard to be classified as a no-kill shelter, which is usually defined of less than 5% euthanasian in a county. When I come in office, we were a high euthanasian shelter. We're now euthanizing down under about 1% historically. The other thing that I've been slow-walking from a standpoint of funding is the Ball Field Project, many of you are aware of, the Rossville Ball Fields. It's a great opportunity, there's a lot of recreation that's needed, but there was a request made by a Commissioner to have the city convey that property to the county, but we didn't have a plan. It was just, we were going to convey it, we were going to take it over. There's a lot of maintenance issues, a lot of issues of that facility. We don't have a recreation department, we don't have recreation budget, but we were just going to accept it and take it over. So, to slow that process down, we put an action item on the agenda to work with a design company to come up with a master plan. Myself, Joe Leggie, Commissioner Blake Moore have served on that kind of task force team working on that. They have poured their ideas and suggestions. We had a meeting on Monday with some city officials and staff members to review that. The, the concern with that is the price tag. And so, until we can find some grant funding to service that, that is being slow-walked. So, if there are two items that I have slow-walked, thus what they are.
What gives you the authority to slow-walk any direction that you've been given by the governing authority of the Board? And if you're admitting that you've slow-walked too, how do we know, and how do I understand now, Shannon, that you're not slow-walking everything? It's, it's, I mean, that's why we're here. And then the propaganda that was put out, that we're trying to change everything, which was not true. We, we wanted a good, a good presentation with some answers for ways and options that the Board may look at to be able to move forward the, the, the Board's decisions that the Board that was voted on by the people in Walker County. You don't have the authority as Chairman to pick and choose which items that you move and you don't move. I, I could be wrong. Let me refer to counsel on that. Is there a provision that allows the Chairman to pick and choose the, the wishes or instruction or however you want to, of the Board? How does that work? Somebody want to catch me up on that, because I, I, I understand the Enabling Act as the governing body of the county, and I understand that three, three out of five vote makes the policy and procedure, and I understand that it's the Chair's responsibility to administer the policy and procedure. That's, that's, and if there's something different than that, we need to understand it, because it's, that's, that's what I understand it to be. I, I will ask my, my cohorts what, what, how they understand it to be, because I don't think that it's your authority to decide what you slow-walk and what you don't. And if you've admitted you slow-walk anything, then you're going against the will of the people. You're going against the Enabling Act, and you're going against the rules that the, of the, what we voted on in 2018 in that form of government, period. All this other stuff, that you're, you're, you're talking about things that, and saying things that, that's not fully, fully accurate either. We're not talking about the job description of this and that. We're talking about working with the Board on a daily basis, working with your department heads, who numerous, if not all, would say that communication is, is not there. You do us a great job on, on the budget and money, and I've, I've commended that, and I will commend that openly and honestly to anyone. But there's too much work to be done, and there's too much coming down the pipe to sit on the corner of your desk and let you pick and choose. So, that's why we're here. And I just, and so, I appreciate your honesty on, on, on the two that you, that you openly admit that you've slow-walked.
Those are the only.
But, but, well, I, I, I mean, I want to, I want, I want to accept that. I'll accept that as your word, but you've, you've done it, you've done it once. Leopard don't change his spots.
Mr. Gerard, a couple of questions while, while we have you here, because you and I have not discussed this topic or these documents at all.
We have not.
And if you had any conversation in the discussion of this with David Gottlieb over the last several months at any time on this discussion?
I have not.
Okay. One thing, because I've not seen these documents, you did provide this two pages that was in our Agenda Packet tonight. But one thing, just because I, I don't know the answer to this, but it says on here, if, and let me frame this, this is Section 5, which we'll get this up on our website tomorrow where everybody can see, but if Section 5 is a, just a draft proposal of a, of a resolution, is all it is, just with you putting the resolution together, but it's the first time I've seen this. But on the page four of that, it says, "Effective Date," if this resolution is adopted. "The resolution shall become effective when all required documents have been filed with the Secretary of State as required by Georgia Constitution, Article 4, Section 2, Paragraph 1G." Could, could you tell us what, what that means or what that paragraph from the section is?
Right, right. That's when, and that's a great, a fair question. So, that's when, as I was going through the resolution, I indicated that the resolution would need to be adopted to approve the county manager, and that can be done very easily with a resolution to approve at exactly one meeting. But I also mentioned that because when you create a county manager that's going to have, for instance, if it's going to have administrative control over the day-to-day functions, that's your job right now, and that's set forth in the Enabling Legislation right now that vests that in you. And so, that is why Tab 6 is a red line of your Enabling Legislation that would need to make sure there's no conflict if you create the county manager such that we don't have you vested with the Enabling Legislation to run the day-to-day affairs and the county manager vested by resolution. The only way to modify your Enabling Legislation by use of the, a local ability to do that is to approve it twice. You have to approve the resolution twice, and then you have to send the approved resolution to the Secretary of State, because it literally becomes part of the laws governing you. So, that's why the two adoptions, and then that's why we have to send it to the Secretary of State. Fair question.
Okay, so, with what you're outlining there, in Tab 6, as you outlined, is the Enabling Act with the red line, or red wording modifications that everyone will see, as you've indicated, that would go in here and fix any of those conflicts. So, I think one of the concerns of some of the people that I have talked to is that by bringing on a county manager through this way, through this code section, we actually are modifying and taking the conflicts out that's creating this county manager's roles. And that's why it's got to be filed with the Secretary of State's office?
It's got to be filed with the Secretary of State's office, because if you do it this way, which I, is the way I recommend you do it, you are modifying your Enabling Legislation. Remember, that's, the Enabling Legislation is just like the Charter. So, you're modifying the Enabling Legislation. So, what the Secretary of State does when they So what the Secretary of State does when they get this, is ever looked at the OCGA code? There's in the back of the OCGA printed volumes of code, those books that all the lawyers have on their shelves that no one reads anymore, and their spines are all unbroken because no one uses books anymore, they all use Westlaw? Okay, in the back of those books, you could go back to the, to the local acts that create Walker County, and there's an index of every time there's been a change in your enabling legislation. And the reason you have to send this to the Secretary of State is that's how they know to publish that change in the back of that book. That's all that's about. It's a fair question.
So since we are having to modify the Enabling Act, and I think that's a clear explanation and I understand now with the filing with the Secretary of State?
Right.
And just like in this document that you provided, you've got here that you provided in writing, it says Walker County is considering the transition to a county manager form of government. And so when we look in the ACCG handbook, there's five different forms of government. And so with this modification, we would be modifying our form of government?
That is a, I would say yes and no. Yes, to the extent that a county manager form of government is a bona fide form of government. There's a county manager form of government with a underlying Board of Commissioners. So yes. The only difference I would say is though, is that in a pure county manager form of government, which this one wouldn't be, a manager has more powers, in fact, including executive powers. In what we're talking about here, this is a function of state law, and the only powers we can give the county manager are administrative powers, which is why I've attempted to narrowly draft it. But your point is reasonable.
Yeah, I see your point there. So another thing too, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that typically a county manager form of government or county manager position typically has the functions to be able to hire, fire, and discipline department heads and anyone under the department head?
Yes.
Typically, my understanding is that an administrator doesn't have the ability to fire or hire a department head. Is that stated correctly, or am I missing something?
Yeah, I don't necessarily agree with that. And again, that's why I specifically put in that tab three out of the ACCG handbook that said that the county manager would be responsible for the day-to-day operations of the county, and that the county manager would, that would include the appointment and removal of county employees. So I mean, my respectful position is, is that the county manager that would be created under this strategy would in fact have hiring and firing to include department head authority. Now, do they have to? No. Could the Board of Commissioners in fact create a county manager and the job descriptions are subsidiary personnel only could be fired and hired, and only the chairman could fire department heads? Yes, that could be done.
Have you prepared for Walker County a sample or draft job description for a county?
I have not. I don't believe so. I don't think so. I have it anticipated in the resolution as an exhibit, but candidly, I need you to guide me. And in fact, even tabs five and six are simply illustrations, because until you tell me what you want to do, if you choose to do anything, all of that could be reworked. So no, sir, I have not prepared a job description.
I know I had not seen one.
This was just for information.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from the board, from Mr. Gerard?
No, sir.
Do we ask for public comments?
I do have a question. I would like to go back to the slow roll comment. You'd indicated you'd slow roll two items. Okay, all right. And I just wanna verify this. But our county, our county is without a human resource manager, correct? Okay. And have been for several months now since our previous person left, correct?
Correct.
I think all of us are concerned that we do not have a human resource manager. I think that's very troubling. But I guess I want you to tell me, please tell me, that that is not an area that's being slow walked.
It's not, absolutely not.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions in the board from Mr. Gerard? Okay, at this time, as we indicated, we'll open the floor for anyone that would like to come up and speak on this topic. And again, please work with us and only speak on this particular topic. Take, yes ma'am, come up please.
Commissioner, will that include questions for the attorney? Can we ask the attorney questions? Is that open?
I would think so. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Okay, my name is Janice Williams. My first question is, who will be sponsoring for hiring, responsible for hiring the county manager, and who will actually write the job description? Will it be a compilation with input from all of you all and the decision made by our governing body, or will it continue to just be the chair?
I believe it will be the board.
Mr. Gerard, my ass.
Please do.
You don't mind.
Sure.
And again, anything I say is subject to the Board of Commissioners agreeing, but the typical way this is done is there would be a job description. The job description would be something that the Board of Commissioners would, I would sort of tell them, and Mr. Gottlieb would tell them what it looks like, and then they would tell me what needs to be in it. And then the typical way the hiring works is by way of a contract. Most county managers are contract employees. So they would have a contract that would include the term of the service, that would include the job description, would include the compensation, and would include the benefits. All of that would be open, it would be vetted, and in fact, the law provides that if there is in fact an individual that is selected as the would-be candidate for the county manager, the law requires their name to be provided to the media and the public for 14 days before the county is able to take final action to actually approve that position. And the reason for that is, is to allow the community and the media to vet that candidate. So that's how that would work, ma'am.
But the actual hiring, the decision to hire, would that be the chair, or will that go to the entire board?
It has to go to the full Board of Commissioners.
Thank you. That was that first question. I hope that didn't take away from my time.
It did. But we got a lot of people who want us to take it, and that was part of your question that was answered.
Okay.
I'll be quick.
No, you're fine, and I appreciate you. As far as the hiring and firing of department heads, that that could possibly be just the chair, I would like to say as a citizen who is involved in our government and speaks with our board members frequently, because the chair won't talk to me, I would like for the entire board to be able to do that, hiring and firing, because with the sole commissionership, we had one person who appointed people. They weren't vetted, they weren't trained, they were unqualified, which is what a lot of you ran on, is we need to get qualified people in there. And a lot of those are department heads that are not qualified, still have not had training. And there have been catastrophic failures from that, one of which was our shelter. You appointed someone with no experience, and our shelter was shut down by the Department of Agriculture with five pages of violations to include inhumane treatment of animals. And that was kept from the public. There's no transparency with the appointing of people that are not qualified. Our board members are speaking with the constituents in the district, and they hear what people are asking for, and that's what they've been pushing for. And if we go back 15 months to get someone to be over animal control and the shelter, and have it be someone who is trained, who is qualified, has experience to have that job, we're 15 months later. That's not rocket science. That's getting a qualified person of which there were candidates available, and it still hasn't been done. And we have an interim director now over animal control, but you won't allow it to be over the shelter, because our shelter only goes through you, to include picking and choosing what organizations or citizens they'll even take a phone call from. And that's kinda silly. There's no transparency there with that. Our shelter still won't use local rescues. Our shelter doesn't post puppies and small dogs to be adopted to the public. One, recently, they go to rescue, and they get paid for those animals. That's not transparency. These people are paying the salaries for our county employees, and they certainly deserve to be able to see every dog that comes in that is healthy enough to be adopted. And that's not what's happening. And it's all done in secret, and if somebody asks a question, it becomes a personal attack. And the, I had a meeting with you, it took me a year and a half to get it, for some accountability and transparency to set the record straight on things, and it didn't change a bit. A week later, you personally insulted me on a phone call. And I still can't get a call. A citizen called our organization, not me personally, and said, "The shelter has agreed to take some puppies from me, but I have to get them there. Could Perry's Promise transport them, because I don't have a car?" My call was to verify, is that true, and can I bring them? It's been three weeks, and I can't get a call taken or returned. So I called into your program and said, "Could you ask the shelter to call me back?" You said, "Yes, I will." You sent him a text to say, "Janice wants to have a meeting with you." He didn't know, this is a yes or no on the telephone. So that's why we need some transparency and some accountability, which is what our board is here to do.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who would like to come next? Yeah, in the red hat, Mr. Pope, I'm sorry. Good thing you quick enough. Mr. Pope. Please state your name, sir.
I'm Jim Pope. And it seems to me like we're trying to make a complicated system here out of a simple. I have confidence in the board right here to run this county. Now, Mark says, "Hey, you got some conflict right here, slow walking here." I got a question from Mark.
Yes, sir.
What are you gonna do when the county manager gets in here and slow walks worse than he does? What are you gonna do with that?
Well, Mr. Pope, that's a real good question. We've got an elected chairman that sits in that chair for four years, and if he determines that he wants to slow walk us, he can do it for four years. A hired position, if he slow walks us, we can fire him and bring somebody in that can do the job.
What about having to pay cost for rest of his contract, breaking contracts?
That would, Mr. Pope, that would be speculative until we would put together a contract and with, I keep speculate on that, that there would be any, you know, that would be how that would be drawn up at that time. I'm not an attorney. The attorneys would take care of that, and I don't know that we would have a clause in it that there would be any type of situation like that. But that's speculative, I can't answer that.
Well, as I said, I think this is the most simple thing, way to do our board, as we got it now.
Yes, sir.
That's my opinion. Now, it seems like you got some conflict here between some of the members and the chair. Well, what about communicating? Are you communicating with him about this? Now, I heard you communicating tonight, but are you shutting down communicating?
Yes, sir, we communicate, we talk in every executive session, as you can talk, you can speak, and I don't wanna speak for the complete board. Yes, we talk about all these, we talk about all these issues, including what we're talking about tonight. Shannon and I have had one-on-one conversation about this particular situation. So yes, we do communicate, but not like we ought to, not as good as we should be. The communication that we receive as district commissioners, I don't believe, in my opinion, is in full disclosure and given to us in a timely manner for us to use it to help us make decisions. I think that that's part of the slow walking process.
And not just that, sometimes it takes us days to get in contact with chair. Fair?
It's very fair.
But again, I like to keep it to the voters of the county. If Shannon's doing all of this that you say, we have the right to vote him out. And I like we have the right to vote any of y'all out.
That's right.
So again, I think you're making, trying to make a complicated system out of a simple one right now. I'm satisfied with what I see. That's what I got to say.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gerard.
Okay, the votes, not the best in the world, unfortunately. Okay, yes, who would like to be next? Yes, sir, here in the brown jacket? Please state your name, sir.
Stanley Jackson. Where can I get one of the packets at?
We will put this, we'll scan this and put this online.
I want a packet, if you'll give me one.
I've got an extra. As fate would have it, but that's the only extra I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, second question is, did Carroll County explore using a county manager?
It's a great question, I do know that.
Well, and if they did, if they did explore it, why did they reject it?
That's fair, I don't know the answer.
Because Carroll County is big, there's a lot going on down there. They got industry, real jobs, the university.
All fair.
I mean, that's a big place. If they can do, if they could run a county without a county manager, why the heck can't Walker County run a county without a county manager? What system do they use in Carroll County?
I don't know.
I didn't catch the other county, Rockwell?
Rockdale.
I'm not, Rockdale?
It's large.
I'm not familiar with it.
It's, yeah, the population's in the book.
Okay.
It's large, too.
If you did go with a county manager, and it puts less load on the commissioners, then we reduce the compensation of the commissioners then, right? Less load on them?
Yeah, there could be reductions in compensation in multiple elected officials.
Would that happen? Less load, less compensation?
What's the question? I don't understand what you're saying.
My question is, if you go with a county manager that's gonna put less load on the commissioners, less load on you, then why compensate you as much as you're being compensated now?
I don't have a problem with compensation where we would be if we went to a, not necessarily a manager or administrator, which we've talked to both of them, the load that they would be taking on would be coming off of the $130,000 salary of the chairman. It wouldn't be the $10,000 a year salary of your district commissioners. Because our load doesn't, our load wouldn't change. We still represent the districts that we represent and the people that we represent.
Well, I'm being told here that a county manager puts less of a load on the system of government we have now. If there's less of a load on you, why pay you as much as you're getting paid now?
Amen? Amen?
My boss always told me, "If you do less work, we're gonna pay you less." Of course, he said, "If you do more work, you're not gonna get any more money anymore."
That's what I was gonna say.
All right, that's all I got. Thank you very much. You did a very good job. You were, I could understand what you were saying, and it wasn't full of jargon and craziness.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
You're better than Johnny Depp.
Dean, I saw your hand that. We have places. Well, that's very permanent. Please state your name, please.
Dean Kelly. Thank you very much for putting this on this evening, very informative. Thank you so much. For those of you all who don't know, I was part of the committee that originally put this form of government together. We worked with Steve Tarvin and Jeff Mullis, and at that time Senator, I mean, representative of.
Duffenbach.
Duffenbach, exactly. Mike Cameron was the chairman. Mike Cameron is now your representative in District 1. And we put together this government. First of all, we did realize that sometime in the future there may be some changes and adjustments that may need to be made. We all acknowledge that and realize that. Another question that I've been asked many times is, why didn't we go to a manager form of government in the beginning? And the reason why we didn't go that path, and we all agreed on that at the time, along with Mr. Mullis and Mr. Tarvin, all of our representatives, was when we researched this, what we found were, was, is that the average county manager only stuck around about two years or less. And they were very expensive. And many times, they would move off to other communities. We wanted to have a Board of Commissioners, including the chairman, that had roots in our community, and that would rule under the ordinances and the laws that they passed. That's why we set this government like we did. Now, having said that, Shannon very well may need some help. I wanna make a recommendation to you guys. There's a lot of variables here. There's a lot of directions you could go if you do bring on a county manager, whatever fashion that may be, whatever authority he may have, whatever limits may be put there. I would recommend that, once again, you put together a board of citizens from Walker County to work with you on this project, if you decide to move in that direction. Thank you.
Okay, yes, Stan in the back, please, sir.
My name is Stan Porter, and I'm a citizen of the county. I've learned a lot tonight, especially from your presentation and from what I'm hearing, but I guess I'm just no country guy, I'm not very bright, but what I'm hearing, guys, is just a failure to communicate. We elected you guys to work together. We elected you guys to work together. I go, you know, I'm not taking sides here. I'm just saying that, you know, the five of you, you know, I used to be a manager a long time ago, and I have people that had conflicts like this. And every now and then, I say, fellas, just get off the bank property. Go fight it out, iron it out, but when you come back here, I want a solution. So as a citizen, I'm asking you all to do that rather than, because, you know, maybe a county manager works for some places, but we had a single form of government for years and worked pretty well. We've had it for the last, what, four and something years, and we did some things that were great. It seems like the last 18 months, we've had some issues. Well, part of that's growing pains. You know, we've got to learn how to work together. So this is new for everybody. But I guess what I'd like to know is, you know, I've heard you say what the problems were, but I've not heard anybody say what the benefit to us citizens are from going this route. Maybe I didn't hear it. I'm old, I can't hear well, but I didn't hear that. What I heard was, I don't like the way it's going this way. I'm going to move somebody else over here, like the gentleman said a while ago. You moved the problem from Shannon, but you moved to somebody else. Yeah, you can fire him, but then you got to start the process over again. So that costs us more money, too, because we got to pay for the guy we had, train the new person we have. And in the meantime, somebody's got to run the system. So plus, if you hire somebody, you four gentlemen, as I understand it, are part-time. It's difficult to supervise a full-time individual from a part-time situation. It can be done, but it's not easy. So I would ask you, as a citizen and as a taxpayer, I just got my tax notification the other day, go, you know, go somewhere, sit down, you five guys, sit down and work this out. That's a cheaper solution than bringing in somebody else to do what we already capable of doing now. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Stan, for that. Thank you. Thank you, Jim, for your comments. I wholeheartedly agree with everybody. I think, in my opinion, this is my opinion, gentlemen, I know most everybody on the board with the exception of Commissioner Blakemore, I think, but it sounds to me like there is a problem within the commission itself that we need you guys to work out before we go out and do any kind of studies and do any kind of hiring of somebody that we may just end up doing, having to redo it in two or three years anyway. We do not, as taxpayers, need to spend $150,000 or $200,000 or $300,000 a year, whatever it's going to cost us to have a county manager. And I know it's going to be at least that by the time you figure in benefits and all the other stuff. We do not spend that money until we can get you gentlemen to sit down with one another and work these things out. And Shannon, it, you know, it behooves you to work with these guys. I'm not saying anybody hasn't worked with anyone. I don't know. But from what I've heard here tonight, you guys need to work together, get this thing worked out. It's what you signed up for. If you've got too much tax, you've got too much administration stuff, emails and stuff, that's what you signed up for. If you don't want to do it, resign, we'll reelect, or we'll recall, whatever we need to do. Now, I love you guys. I love you all. I do. And some of your friends are mine. But get this thing worked out amongst yourselves. We do not need to spend money for an additional level of government.
Yes, sir, the black shirt. I'm sorry to know your name.
I believe you're my representative, sir. I live in Chickamauga. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your clarification, because I was concerned. Because there have been some admissions. This is and would be, if you took that route, it would be a change in the government. I've only lived here a year. I haven't lived here for very long. I love it here. So that quelled one of my concerns, or answered some of my questions. You're not doing this now. You're not voting on it now. It's just an informational session. So I appreciate that. But it would, if you go this route, it would change what everybody that came before me did vote for. And it does sound like it would cost a lot. And I know that, you know, you start out by saying, you're not trying to blame anyone or anything, but you did. And that's fine. And that's fine. And that's fine. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. And I'm just trying to reflect the same. So I'm in agreement with some of these other folks. You know, I heard some grumbling. There's some of my own. I opened my taxes up. You know, I don't want to pay any more taxes. I don't want to pay for another form of government. I don't want to pay for another bureaucrat. I don't want to pay the increase in taxes that I got the other day, quite frankly. So, and going this route, we're going to have to incur more cost if we do that. I don't see how you get around that. I don't think anybody wants to do that. I've been on boards like this. I know it's frustrating when people don't communicate. I know it's frustrating when you want answers, you don't get them. I know it's frustrating when you want communication and you don't get it. None of that stuff's easy. But there's got to be a way to settle that. And I will ask a question of, this is my first meeting. This is the first time I've come. I've watched a couple online. I don't see much of the audience, right, from the camera angle? You can answer this question, is it usually this full? Maybe that's part of the solution. And I don't want to be somebody coming in here, you know, I didn't come from up north. I just want to make that clear. So, you know, but I got two little girls. They're real little. Their mom works all day, you know, but I'm here. And maybe that's part of the solution. Maybe this room needs to be this full a lot more often. Because I bet you everybody found out more than they know before they got here today. So I intend to be here more often if, you know, my three ladies at home will allow it. And I intend to reach out to you personally, because you're my representative, and I'm all about learning more about what goes on in my backyard. So that's all I got to say. I'm sure somebody else will talk more about taxes later. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Blue shirt.
And my wife told me not to get into much trouble. I hear you fussing about your taxes. I moved up here from Atlanta. You don't know what high taxes are. I've told Carolyn Walker, I will never fuss about a tax bill in Walker County. That being said, you said that because we would change the form of government to a, use the right word, county manager form of government, that the board would have to pass on that twice?
Yes.
Do those two passes have to come in consecutive sessions?
Yes, sir.
So if they had one in June and one, they had to start all over again in August if they?
If they skip a meeting, they have to start all over again. Yes, sir.
Okay. And the other thing is, most of the counties that you tell us about have got a county manager form of government?
Some sort of administrative professional, yes.
Okay. Were you involved when most of those transitions to that form of government took place?
No. No, sir.
In your experience, when those governments took on that county manager form of government?
Yes.
Did they put it in the form of a referendum and let the people who put them in their seat in the first place tell them how they thought about it? Or did they just use the authority that had been given to them to do what they wanted to do without finding out how the people of Walker County or the other counties thought about it?
The second option. They did not have a referendum.
Is that an option? Can they do that?
The only way that, if I can speak, the only way that you could set up a system to have a referendum, to create a county manager form of government, would be for the General Assembly to adopt a local act that would allow that to go on the ballot. And my fear would be, it's a good question, it's a fair question, my fear would be the General Assembly would say, why would we adopt that local law to set up a referendum in your county? We gave you a statute to do that. So your question's a good one, but no referendum would be required.
Would it be advised?
It's not going to be advised by me, because I don't think the General Assembly would do it. The General Assembly, I believe, would say, use the statute. We've already codified in Georgia laws.
Is there another form, then, that the board could use to find out the opinion of the voters in the county?
The Georgia law has not allowed the Board of Commissioners to do straw polls. The only entities that can do straw polls are the Democratic and Republican Committees can put ballot questions on a presidential preference primary. You may have just gone to the polls and seen some of those questions. That's the only mechanism for straw polling. And so if you wanted to do that, you probably have to wait a year till next year, get with your Republican or Democratic caucuses and ask them to put that on the ballot. Forgive me for speaking not.
No, that's okay. I could hear you sort of.
All right. Forgive me.
No, that's fine. So they can do it?
Yes, sir. The Republicans and Democrats can put straw poll questions on the ballot. Board of Commissioners cannot.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, in the back, please.
Good day to everybody. My name is Erin Reichbauer, and I just moved to this beautiful county in July of 2021. I do a lot of work with animal controls and shelters, PETA, and I've raised multimillion dollars for the welfare of animals alone in my community. Since moving here, I have noticed a lot of issues with the animal control, and I've also noticed a lot of sadness at the shelter, which, when I say sadness, it's just the lack of professionalism there, the lack of anyone having really any knowledge of what their actual position is. And just speaking to people at the shelter, I can tell that they have had absolutely zero education on how a shelter is supposed to run. I have taken several animals there, and when I walked into that building, I could barely breathe. That's how bad that shelter smelled. And when the young lady walked back with this dog that I had brought, I followed her, and I guess she didn't realize that I had followed her, but I went to the room on the left-hand side, which is the room that they had probably, I'm going to say, at least 60 cats in. The smell in that room made me run out the front door in seconds. That's how nauseating it was. And I was wondering if anybody here has ever walked into that shelter before? And who actually is in charge of how that shelter is ran? Is it you, Mr. Whitfield? When was the last time you physically went into that shelter?
It was probably about six weeks ago.
Six weeks ago? And was it something that you were happy with? Did you not notice a distinct smell or how even the people that have to work there have to smell that the whole day?
One of our challenges there is the ventilation system. The way, when the building was installed and designed with the ventilation, it's actually pulling some of the fresh air through the entire building. And so we have put some funding in our splash budget to go in there and make improvements to the shelter. And one of the major improvements that needs being made is a rework and redesign of the ventilation system, so a lot of that smell is not transferred throughout the shelter.
May I ask how much funding was given for that?
It's on our website. I'm just going from memory, but I was thinking it was around $300,000.
So $300,000 to the facility?
Two to $300,000, something in that range.
To allow the ventilation to be proper in that particular shelter?
Yes, ma'am.
So it doesn't make sense to maybe take $300,000 and put it into a shelter that's bigger, better, more organized, professionals that know what their position is? I just don't understand that. I've been here, like I said, since July. I've been in that shelter several times. I've been in, I was just there a couple days ago. There is no ventilation in there. It smells just as horrific a couple days ago as it did in July for me. And I just wasn't sure what the problem was with that. And I don't understand why the shelter isn't open to the public, why people have to make appointments to go look at an animal.
The shelter is open five days a week to the public?
You can't go in there without an appointment, and I've been told that.
No, the shelter is open five days a week.
No. No. See, lack of communication, because it is not open five days a week to the public. You have to call the shelter, pick the animal that you saw off the website, just to go meet that animal.
Well, they do prefer, if you're wanting to look or adopt an animal, to make an appointment. That is a preference, but somebody can go to the shelter during office hours.
No, they can't. They don't let them in. They do not let them in. And therefore, if this was an open shelter to the public and to the community, do you know how many animals that would get saved from this shelter? If people could go in Monday through Friday or Monday through Saturday and just walk into the shelter and look at all the animals, every animal there? Because it's hard to connect with an animal when, I believe her name is Emily, has to bring this animal out to you in a waiting room that is half the size of this little area right here.
It is very small.
It's very, very small.
Unfortunately, your time is up. I'd love to have more conversation with you.
Okay. Well, I have emailed you about 70 times and...
I'm not getting any of your emails.
Yeah. And I've left messages with your secretary at least 50 times. So as well as 350 calls.
Okay, well, if you'll wait after we get through, we'll have a conversation.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Who's next? Yes, ma'am, with the feedback.
Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak. I'm Laura Alsley, and I live in this county and have for many years. And I did want to express to you all that, you know, I can see the friction with the board, but that does extend outside the board, too, because communication is very slow. And anytime we're making phone calls or emails, those either go unnoticed or they're delayed for a long time. So I would like to see that improved, and that's why this is intriguing to me, although I see both sides. So I do see the reason not to have a county manager, and I see the reason to have one. And first of all, I think a county manager or just someone in your office, perhaps, could help field calls, you know? And then I voted for you and, you know, some on this board. So I do want to be heard. I do not reach out that often or haven't with you. And I do appreciate Mr. Hart communicating with me, too. But timely communication, not within 24 hours necessarily, but at least in the same week or two, would be great, you know? And I would like to see that improved. You know, I like the idea of a county manager, because, you know, in my business and many other businesses, if you're not doing a good job, you can be fired. And, you know, perhaps your workload or y'all's workloads are too much. So perhaps someone could take the burden off of you, whether it's someone within your office or a manager. a manager. You know, one thing, you all talk about things being slow-walked, you know, the communication, of course, with me has been slow. I have not seen what you all have seen, but I have followed these meetings online. And one thing that I did see that wasn't slow-walked was this ACCG proposal for the pension plan. That was not slow-walked, okay? And one thing that I would like to say about that is, you know, Mr. Gerard here talked about how your jobs, all of you, is the, for transparency and to be stewards of our county financially, okay? In order to do that in any business, this goes beyond the pension, okay? Any business, I think it's prudent to at least get three proposals. You never have to go with the lowest, you never, you know, you can go anywhere, as long as you get three proposals and you're not working the good old boy network, necessarily, not saying that that's the situation here, but I think it would be prudent to do that and have good notes. And that's just part of compliance, and that's what you all should do. And I know I'm running low on time, but I would like to hear from you all how communication can improve if we don't have a manager. How, how can that happen?
Well, I mean, I'll take that. I mean, I do communicate with these gentlemen, I mean, Mark and I have had two conversations.
I'm talking about with me too.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're sorry.
I mean, to the people that voted for you all, so...
Yeah, great, great question. We do have an e-newsletter that we send out once a month that's a free, just, oh, we need your email address, and you can sign up on the website.
How about responsiveness? That, that's kind of more along the lines, because I do read and I listen to these streams. I'd like to know, what can your office do to be more responsive? Because if I'm calling you, it's because I feel like something's important.
Okay. So have you, have you left me a message, is that what you're saying? I thought you said earlier...
Yes, I have, I have, you know, I left you a message last year. You did finally get back with me. I left the message in June of last year, and we did speak on August 23rd of last year. But my, my point is, that came after two emails. And, you know, you can miss those, and I do understand that, but I'd like to, I'd like to know, can your staff help you? Can your staff look over those emails and help you out?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good possibility. I get roughly about 100 business-related emails per day.
Me too.
And so, and I've, I've been tracking, I respond, the ones that need to be responded to typically runs between about 50 to 60 a day. Some of the emails I get are just information or I'm being copied, or it's just a notification of a meeting or reminder appointment or something like that. But I work hard to try to respond to every email that I possibly can.
Yeah.
I've never assigned my inbox to anybody else because I felt like it's important that when I return an email that it comes from me and it's not an assistant answering or responding to a question, that it truly is from me. I know when I first took this position as a sole commissioner, people were shocked that I did respond to my own emails and I did my own correspondences and letters as well. And so that's something that I wanted those to come from me so people know that it's from me.
Well, if you all do decide to hire someone, you know, one thing I'd like for y'all to consider is, you know, if you cannot fire someone, in other words, if they're your family or friends and you can't fire them, don't hire them. That's, that's kind of our rule. The other thing is...
I'm sorry, your, your time is up, but I just feel...
Is to hire slow, fire fast. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Jill Weiss, and I just have a question. Mr. Askew, you said you made $10,000. Don't the part-time commissioners make $12,000? I think you're supposed to.
That's a mission, yeah, that's...
Okay. I was going to say, you, you just got a raise, didn't you?
Yeah, you just gave me one. And, and thank you for bringing that up because it's a very nominal amount for the work that we've been...
Well, it's a part-time job.
Well, no, it's not. It's, it's, it's really not a part-time...
I'm sorry.
It's considered a part-time position, but I think that any of these guys here will tell you that it's much more than part-time. We, we spend a lot of time trying to communicate, but you're exactly right, we work other, we have other jobs and other positions.
Okay. That, I just know, and I, I believe that when we voted for this, it was for four part-time commissioners and one full-time chairperson, so...
Yes, ma'am.
And I know it's whatever you put into it, and I, I think people would appreciate y'all putting as much time as you could into it because of that. The other question I have is, isn't it, I may be wrong on this, aren't you, if you have questions and things about county operations, stuff like that, aren't you supposed to call the commissioner in your district? Or are you supposed to call the chairman?
You can contact your district commissioners or the chair.
Okay, so it's either...
There's a board of five, and well, and it, you know, like I said, like, was, we talked about earlier, it's, if the board, it is, it takes a majority of the board to do anything.
Right.
And I wanted to correct myself when I said not, not part-time, I wasn't being short.
No.
What I was trying to say is, there's not a part-time to representing the citizens of Walker County. It's a full-time, it's a part-time job, but these district commissioners, not myself, all of us, and including the chair, he works weekends and nights, we take, it's, to, to try to assist the citizens, it is called a part-time position.
It's a full-time, it's a part-time privilege, is the way I look at it, to represent people in that way. I mean, you knew you weren't going to make much money doing it. I mean, I don't think anybody had any guess about that. Okay, y'all had mentioned about how important transparency and accountability is, and that's what this county manager would bring. How long have y'all been working on this county manager thing? Mr. Gerard, I'd, I'd ask you that too.
I don't know.
We've, we've been, we've, we've talked about things for probably two or three months.
That's all, two or three months?
I don't, yeah, maybe, maybe a little longer than that.
Are you not the, working on it?
I am.
Or your, your staff would be working on it?
Yeah, my staff.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, but it's, it's been, but again, nothing's been brought to the Board until tonight.
I see. But who else, Mr. Gottlieb, you're the primary county attorney, were you aware of this going on?
Well, I was, I was not consulted by Mr. Gerard at all.
Or the...
I have had these commissioners talk to me about the concept of a county manager, and Mr. Gerard has not reached out to me to say, hey, what do you think about this? Get my input. It's been strictly...
Are you going to do that? Do you have any planning?
The board has asked me to, I don't know that this goes any further than after tonight.
I see. Do you know how much you've billed for this project?
I do not.
Do you have any rough idea of how many hours that you've worked on it?
I don't. Oh, it's probably less than, I would say, 5,000.
Less than 5,000 hours?
5,000.
Okay, good, because that's $200 an hour, you're giving me a heart attack. I think that, Commissioner Whitfield, do you feel burdened by your responsibilities and that you don't have the proper time to be able to fulfill your job?
It is a lot of responsibility. I think Mr. Gerard laid out a whole host of things that a lot of people here tonight probably does not realize that our office does in function. Having a, a, a person to help me with that would be much welcome if that was done and structured properly. I don't feel like what's been presented here tonight is the solution. But there is another option that could be implemented that's referenced in the ACCG guide for our form of government.
As administrative assistants?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. Mr. Gerard, you mentioned that the duties of the county manager can be limited by the Board and what they select. Can they, the Board come and change that anytime?
Yes.
Without citizen input?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I worked with some people, and we really fought really hard to get a Board of Commissioners. And when we voted for this, it was for four part-time commissioners and a chairman. And for that to be changed, I personally feel it should be a vote of the people, and it should, whether it's a straw vote, whatever, we should have something to say about that. And I, I feel that getting, voting for that type of government, I mean, I think everybody thought about it long and hard after being a sole commissioner from like, forever, 1930s. But I purposely wanted a person in an executive position to slow-walk, to slow things down, and I'm using that word, I don't like that word, but it's been commonly used here today, and it, it suits a purpose. But I found with the commissioner, before Commissioner Whitfield, with the sole commissioner, it was just going to do it, don't care if anybody knows about it, and it was just terrible. And I don't want to see any form or fashion of that coming back again. I think the people have a right to vote on this. I, I love you guys, but I don't want to see where y'all are hiring a, a county manager. I've heard for years the problems of a county manager in Catoosa County. Anybody wants to know, look at Catoosa County. If you want some in-fighting and cat-fighting and everything else...
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay, well, thank you, and if we do this, please, let's vote on it.
Yes, sir. Toby?
All right. I just wanted to say first, Mr. Gerard, it was an excellent presentation. I truly wanted to come here tonight and learn what this issue was about and get more information on it, and I thought you laid out everything very clearly, so I appreciate that. I had some questions, if you don't mind, that I wanted to ask of you, because I, like most of these people here, are here to educate myself, to learn. You do this professionally, you've done, this is our first experience with this. In your experience, a lot of county managers, I know we've mentioned salaries and pay and things like that, I know it probably varies from area to area. In your experience, what is a range that you typically see salary benefits, compensation package for bringing in a county manager?
My experience has been that if you're going to get anybody, particularly if you pack, if you factor in benefits, you're looking at at least 100 to 150,000.
Okay, so it's, it's six-figure compensation package?
I, I would, yeah. Even, even if, let me just say this, even if you offer them, let's just say, $80,000, once you factor in a benefit package and some of the typical other things, I wouldn't expect it's going to hit 100,000. Now, you know, you all may be much better at that than what I've seen, but that's, that's, that's low in my mind.
You, you mentioned bringing in a quality candidate. Are there things the Board could consider if they do decide to go this route? Are there certifications? Are there job experiences? Are there technical certificates? Are there things that they could look for in a candidate that would probably make them more expensive, but would make them certifiable?
Yeah, there is, there is, there is a national public official managerial certification. It's just like any other group that, 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 that has like a series of ethical qualifications, so they may have that sort of a certification, I think it's called the ICME, ICMEA. Obviously, though, the biggest, the biggest indicator is going to be experience in other jurisdictions, where have they worked before. A problem I have seen is you recruit and bring in a county manager, and they may come from another state or another jurisdiction and don't know the culture, don't know the flavor, don't know how this, and I have seen counties, Board of Commissioners bristle at that because this person comes in and thinks that they're going to reinvent the way everything is done. And so that would be, if you're asking me for my cautionary instruction, it would be, carefully vet these individuals, so you don't get someone that decides that what works in LA or Fort Lauderdale is what needs to occur in Walker County.
I appreciate it. I know one of the concerns that I, I've had several people ask me and that I honestly don't know the answer to, you mentioned it typically is a six-figure compensation package. Is some type of buyout clause, I think somebody mentioned that, is that pretty standard in this line of work where if you do decide to terminate this person, that they do receive some kind of compensation on the back end for being terminated?
Talking about a severance?
Yes.
And it is common. Let me, let me only say this, typically the severance is, is, is put in there to ensure that the county manager doesn't make one bad decision, the Board gets upset and fires him, you know, more harm. My typical understanding is, and this has been my experience, is that the more the county manager has to relocate up in their kids, move all the way over here, they want protection, that there's not just going to be some emotional-based firing and send them packing while they buck into their entire life.
Exactly.
For it, and, and the reason I say that is, if you were to hire somebody locally who is not relocating, then there may not be any severance, but my experience has been that is one.
Okay, I appreciate it. For the Board, I just wanted to say in my last minute and 19 seconds here, I appreciate that you guys have brought this forward, you've had this information session. I think I side with a lot of people who have expressed that it does seem like going this way could be very costly on the county, okay? We're going to have a high compensation package, we're going to have to pay for this person, we're going to have to have a, you know, some type of buyout clause, some type of severance package traditionally for them, they're going to tie up county resources, it's going, I agree with the other people who have come up here and spoke today that if this is a communication issue, we should keep this in the family and inside the county and try to resolve this first, whether that is a resolution between the five of you, whether that's an administrative assistant, which would be a much lower cost and a much lower burden on the taxpayers. Let's try other options first, you know, communication, administrative assistant, then let's go to the extreme and talk about a county manager situation if you guys aren't able to resolve this issue. But I feel like we all voted for this system of government, we all voted for the you five individuals, and I feel like we wouldn't have voted for you if we didn't have confidence that you guys could work together and be able to resolve this.
Thank you, and I, I, I appreciate what you've said, and you, and you hit the nail on the head. The, we, we were elected by the citizens to do our job, and I think the frustration and why we are here tonight is that when we do come together as a voting body, as the governing authority of the county, and, and, and come and make a decision, then we expect it to be moved forward. It's not that we're not, the communication, the, the decision's made and passed on, and then that's where it's going. So we're, we're, we're more than willing to work, I mean, we all have, Shannon and I talked twice today.
Two hours.
Two hours today. So we, we communicate, it's just we've got to, we've got some things we've got to pull together. But thank you, like I said, this was informational and informational only, and I hope that everybody got a good, a good little idea of that there are other, there's things out there, and that's why we did it.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your comments, and everybody else's as well.
I appreciate Commissioner Askew stating that we do communicate, because I know there was some indication earlier that that's not taking place, and there is a lot of communication. Could there be more? So we do communicate. Yes, sir.
My name is Greg Wood, and I thank all of you good people for giving me the opportunity to speak and the Board. I, I know Commissioner Stoltz, I don't know any of you other guys. I do know Commissioner Whitfield. I concur with what I've heard tonight, is there seems to be a sense of contentiousness that has no place on this Board. Plain and simple. You were charged, you knew what the job was when you took it, you, you ran for office, you were elected, you were charged to accomplish what the citizens of this county ask you to do. Now, the old-fashioned way was, we lock you up in a room, don't give you water and food for three days, and in a little while, you're going to come out with some kind of consensus. And I'm, you know, I'm frustrated, Mr. Askew, I feel that you're probably very contentious here outwardly, I think to the point of being unprofessional.
I, I don't mean to be unprofessional, I'm just stating the facts that we've made to say.
But you can do it in a different way.
Why would that be?
Well, I think you can, you can have more decorum. I think you can, you can look at it as, as collaboration. And, and you guys can, you can work together. We have the confidence in you. We did, or you wouldn't be sitting here. The other thing that I see us needing, from what I saw, heard from everybody in here, is value. Value. Your time, the money, you know, I don't, I really don't care whether it's, a manager costs us 200,000 or 500,000. If we get the value out of the manager. I don't think we're going to get that, but I think that, that with, with the, with the fact that you've been charged to stand for our county government, you are our county Go get together, collaborate, come to a consensus, and give these people the value they hired you for.
Yes, sir. Mike?
My name is Michael Pirtin. I've been in the county since 1982 or so. I've got to say, I think y'all have done a great job. There's not one of you that I would trade for any other candidate here, not one of you. And I, you know, there's probably an issue where y'all rolled the taxes back or the millage rate for us. Y'all come together on that. And probably a lot of y'all don't know that. They rolled them back for us. So really, what we're facing now is the school millage rate during a pandemic that I think is unfair that I've been vocal about. It's, you know, I'm skeptical to talk either way about this because y'all have worked good together. But there's one thing that I need to make clear to especially the citizens here is you voted for what you got. And when there's no choice on the ballot, they could have put a choice on the ballot. The folks that designed that, the man that spoke earlier, Mr. Kelly, they could have gave you a choice on that. There's many boards. There's five-man board, or four, five-person, I shouldn't say men because we have women. But there's, there's boards with chairmans, there's boards with out-chairmans, there's boards with different ways. And so we was not educated about that before we voted. So I don't think it's fair to these four district commissioners that you say you knew what you got into. Because they still don't know what they're into yet. They're still trying to get information and do their job. And that's what they're doing now. They're vetting and trying to fill their way through this position after 18 months. So to say that we voted for this, in my opinion, is not true. We voted for a board of commissioners. It was very vague, and it did, it could have been, we could have been given a choice. And by not having that choice, we've got what we got. I've heard, Shannon, I've heard you talk about this could be like a bad marriage, and that's where we're at. I've heard you say a board of commissioners can be like a bad marriage, and that's clearly where we're at. Do I think y'all can work through it? Yeah, I think you can. But I do have a question for the attorney. Now, you said that this board has the authority to make that decision without a vote from the general public. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Does this board have the authority to take away Shannon's pay for that? Or vote to go ahead and pay him for the rest of the time that he was elected for?
I would be uncomfortable with the board using home rule to modify compensation. I don't think that's allowed. I think they would have to go to the General Assembly to do that.
So they'd have to go to the General Assembly. If they hired a county manager, they would still have to pay Shannon for the time that was remained?
That is my position. I think that is the correct, yes.
So we would have to pay a county manager and Shannon?
Until the General Assembly corrected that, yes, that's true.
Okay. Well, I hope you guys can work it out.
Hey, Mike, one more thing for you. So you mentioned a form of government. I remember when that went on, the first straw poll was done in 2016. It then was put on the ballot in 18. But in between those times, there was a group that got together, and I think Deans left. I don't know if anybody else in the room that was on that committee. But they did publicize what form we were going to before the election. Now, if you didn't read it, that's one thing. But it was on, it was on in the newspaper on the website, because I read about it as that was interesting and serving on that. So it was out there, maybe not publicized, and everybody read it though.
Right. They've got a way of being vague in situations and tailoring these things to vote on the way they want to, by not just, let's just put it on the ballot. And I say, let's put it on the ballot. I don't care if it takes 10, 5 lines or whatever it takes.
Yeah, it took a lot about truth. But it wasn't, I remember reading it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because most of the, most of the people that might not have seen that, they're voting for a board. And another thing, the board that the folks voted for was a board of equality. We don't have a board of equality now. I can say that. Because these men are not feeded, they're not treated equal. They're not feeling equal, or they wouldn't have said what they said tonight. The people voted for a board to have a voice in their community. And they can only have that voice if these men are, know what's going on, even at large, because some of the decisions they vote on has to do with at large, the whole county. So if they don't know what the budget is, and they, they want to make a decision for their district, how they know if that's a sound decision or not? If they, if they don't have all those basics covered? They don't, they can't make a decision based on the whole picture. So they, the district commissioners need information. And they need it accessible, just as well as a chairman. And I think that would help out a whole lot. So I think that's all we've got.
Okay, yes, sir. The black shirt there, Jack, and I'm sorry, yes.
My name is Andrew Underwood. I came to Walker County eight years ago. Was raised elsewhere, but taught, in the meantime, it's become my home. My kids have thought, both been born here and taught. I'm really do enjoy living here and care a lot about this community. And this has been the first time I've been able to come to one of these sessions, mostly because I worked second shift up until recently. So it's a pleasure to meet all of you. I expect to be coming here a bit more often now. But I do have some concerns regarding the hiring of a county manager. Mostly that this position would be hired and appointed by the, by the elected officials of the county, rather than someone who is directly elected by the people of the county. I feel that the more power that someone has over the daily lives of the people who live here, the more important it'd be that the people that that person is going to have authority over have a say in who is going to be exercising that authority directly. I had also heard that one of the things that this could help was with transparency. And I'm a little confused. I'd like to know if any of you have any particular examples of how that would improve transparency?
I think that's a very good question.
I'll clarify that. I think the point, when I made that statement, was talking about the ideals of government, that accountability and transparency were more important than efficiency. Transparency is a subject of the Open Meetings and the Open Records Act, otherwise called the sunshine laws. The county manager won't affect that one way or the other. State law governs that. So I don't, so to the extent that the crowd here heard that a county manager is going to be a panacea to transparency, that's not true. Transparency and accountability are the function of two things. State law and a board that decides to be transparent. Now, there are plenty of governments in Georgia that may not make that choice, but I think that's the choice this, this board has made. So a county manager doesn't plead directly into that. It's a fair point of clarification.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. And also, thank you very much for your presentation. It was very clear and understandable.
Thank you.
I do understand that there is a large workload involved here. And that a lot of it is not clear and at the forefront where all of us can see it. A lot of this is behind the scenes and doesn't get as much appreciation. However, I really do think that hiring a county manager is not the answer in that it would take a lot of these day-to-day responsibilities and powers and give them to someone who is not directly accountable to the people of the county. Thank you for listening to me. I hope you'll.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Karen Bradley. And actually, I really know, have known Stoltz for over 50-plus years. I've known Brian and his family for over 40. I've known Mark for over, what, 23?
Yes, ma'am.
And I've known your father-in-law for nearly all my life. So, but to address your point, I, since October of 20, I have been the only consistent citizen in Walker County to attend these meetings. It has been disheartening to see that we haven't had as many involved as well. But then I've also was asked on October of the last meeting that, you know, he knew what my agenda was going to be, and that he would give me a call, and I wouldn't really need to come to any more meetings, which really spurred me to want to come even more. So I will be here every time I can. The executive meetings that you normally have after the regular meeting, which I've also stayed for those, have lasted anywhere from 20 minutes, which was the last one, because you weren't in a hurry to go on vacation. But some have been as long as two hours and 45 minutes long, where I've gotten home at 11:15. In all those executive meetings, there was only really one decision made in all those. And I think that decision, I think, was actually the pay raises. For 40, 400 employees, if they're all employed 40 hours a week for a 52-hour, 52-week period, that's $1.7 million. That was approved. That was to keep the employees here from looking for other employment, which they really needed that. But in hindsight, you know, every, everybody needs a job. And I appreciate that I do get to come up here and talk when I do. And usually I do have a point to make. You do need a HR person. But you also don't need to be being the PR person. You need, you've, you've got somebody hired for that, I believe. And you need to handle more of your internal stuff instead. You guys have more ability than what I guess you really originally thought. And I know you get a lot of calls. You've got a couple from me, or speaking. And Brian and I, we have more communication outside for other agencies that we're involved in. But y'all really need to work together, strive together. You shouldn't have, I don't know if you still do it or not, but I know there for a while, and I think it was probably more towards COVID, that you were taking the calls for the Ag Center and the Civic Center instead of having a personnel there. I'm assuming it was because of COVID.
There's personnel there now.
Okay. And I have heard multiple, and Janice brought up about the animal shelter. And I have more, heard more responses of that prior to her even mentioning it, that they can't get in, or it's hard to get in, or whatever. That needs to be fixed for adoptions and whatever. Because I know there's people out there that need them. I think that may be all. I made a lot of notes, but I've learned a lot. And I'm glad to see everyone here. And I hope y'all come back. Thank you.
Who would like to speak next on this topic? Remember, we're still on this topic of the county manager. Yes, ma'am.
Do I have to state my name? I think y'all know who I am. I probably saw some eyes roll when I walked up here. I'm Angela Pence. I live here. I am probably one of Shannon's worst critics. He knows that all too well. I wanted to point something out. I don't know what y'all have done to tick this guy off, but even I can get the man to answer the phone. I'm not discounting anybody, you know, having that issue whatsoever. It's clearly something you need to do better. But I think it was a few weeks back, I called him with an issue. He answered the phone and was very polite and helped me work through that issue, which I was actually quite shocked. I was like, oh, hey, Shannon, it's Angela. He was like, oh, Angela. And I appreciate that. You know, I, that's one thing I appreciate is that communication back and forth, even when, again, you can go search my name and pull up multiple news articles where I have stood right here against him. My, I have heard, I understand both sides of the county manager argument. You know, it's, the arguments I've heard are very valid. Many people have a lot of criticisms of Shannon, some that are very valid. So I get it. I definitely understand it. Do I think it's worth having to pay, you know, another extra, what, 130, 140,000 dollars a year? Absolutely not. You, you are all men up here, and y'all can deal with the problem. That's my perspective. And I know you all have big personalities, especially you, Mark. So I know y'all can deal with it. But my other biggest concern, especially as a libertarian, which is what I am, you know, obviously, I don't agree with expanding government in any form or fashion. I don't, do not want that at all. But the fact that I have personally, again, been up here multiple times through various different projects and felt as though, even though people were speaking out on a thing, it went unheard and situations were railroaded through anyway. One of the biggest ones was Gateway here recently. So my concern is that this is going to be a decision that's made, and the input of the people just isn't going to matter. And this is a very big decision to make without the input of the people. Ideally, I know you said a year for a referendum, so this is, you know, pushing stuff out and pushing stuff out. I believe the people should get to vote on this if we're going to do it. Absolutely. So that's all I had to say. Thank you, guys.
Who's next? Yes, Jim.
Jim Buckner. Not a lot of comments, other than, I'm thinking, and our attorney here, he could answer this, but the odds are, if you wanted someone who's effective and you'd go this route, I think you're talking about a master's degree at a minimum. I don't think you'll be hiring anybody local. I think it'll be somebody from a, with a master's degree. Otherwise, I don't think you get the efficiency that you get, that you, that you want. The other thing is, it's just like deciding about this. It's easy to decide, but the implementation is a different animal. And, and Mark, you mentioned a while ago, I think it was the Ross, or somebody, the piece in Rossville to deed to you, or what was it?
The Ballfields.
The Ballfields, yeah. Well, and I'm, I'm not defending that, but I'm just pointing out from my perspective and what I do, you decide you want to do something, but then you've got to decide how you pay for it and how you use it effectively and how it meets the approval of these people. So I put that aside. The other thing I have then is a question for, for the attorney. Maybe I'm mistaken, and I don't know that I understand home rule all that well. But we talked about how we, you could have two meetings, and they can pass on it and say it's done. I guess I was under the impression that the enabling legislation required the approval of the local legislators to be able to carry it to the legislation. And I'll digress from that because normally on local legislation, if it only affects Walker County, hey, it's a gentleman's agreement. And if these legislators agree, which is what happened when we went to a five-man commission, if these legislators agree, it's rubber stamped by the rest of the assembly of this legislature. Okay. So I think that was.
Typically, that's.
Typically. And so I'm thinking that was left out. Did, you could do it in two meetings, done deal? I don't think so. I think you're going to have to have the support.
No, the, the Georgia Constitution allows the Board of Commissioners to modify its own enabling legislation, subject to some fairly strict limitations. But I believe in this case, this, this could be done by local law.
Okay.
But, but you're not wrong. The typical way you modify a local act is to get your delegation to carry it to the General Assembly, and they rubber, rubber.
Because the local legislation had to carry this to begin with.
Now, that, there is no question, that, that could not have been done. That was when. That was when Commissioner Chairman Whitfield was the sole commissioner. He could not have expanded to a full board by himself. That would have been a none. He had to have the general.
Okay, I just want to clarify. Yes. Thank you.
Okay, who's next? Still talking about our local act and county manager. I know y'all, y'all been here a long time. I don't want anybody to be missed that's sat here this long to speak. Is everybody ready to move forward on our agenda? Last call. Okay. Hearing done. Y'all wanting a break? Okay. Is everybody good with that? We, it's, it's 9:35. We've been sitting here since before 7 o'clock, many of us. So let's take a few-minute break. And I know Mr. Gerard's going to want to transition, so he can get back to Forside, I believe it is.
Woodstock.
Or Woodstock, I'm sorry. So let's, we'll, we'll take a recess here, and we'll reconvene probably in about 10 minutes. But we hope you all do stay. Okay, I'm going to need to call us to order, please. I know it's getting late, and I know there's some good conversation going on as well, but there's people sitting here that's got action items on this agenda we want to get taken care of tonight. So thank you for being patient with us. It is 9:50. We're still Thursday, May the 26th, 2022. The next item on our agenda, under unfinished business, a variance appeal by Sharon. Who says that last name? I'm sorry, don't want to butcher that up. Reno, thank you. For property located at 41 Lee School Road, Lafette, Georgia. Tax map impartial 0-482-018, 018A, previously considered in December 9th, 2021. Is Ms. Sharon here with us tonight? Okay, yes, ma'am. Come on up, please. Just take your time, it'll be fine.
Oh, sorry.
Go right ahead.
The other meeting, they said that, the other meeting, they said that if I went through the steps as code said, that they would try to help me to safely fix my home, which it did have a lot of costs with doing that. But, and, and we have a licensed plumber, a licensed electrician, and a contractor for the carpentry. And Kristi and, and.
David.
Yes, have, have called me, and I didn't know anything. And they did kind of keep me on task because I didn't, I didn't know anything about how to do these things. And I am glad they were very professional and, you know, helped me to stay on task, because I didn't know how to do these things.
Sure.
So, but I do have those things, and.
Okay, so I know we've been provided some, some information here of some, some quotes from different vendors. I guess David probably helped facilitate getting these quotes for you, like you say, to help you. So, so what is your request tonight exactly?
Sorry. I, I just wanted to persuade, proceed with the people that can pull the permits if, if they would allow me to, to do whatever it takes, the steps that, to, to make it safe. I do have some assistance with some financial to help me. And he's very reliable. He's a good friend of mine who is helping me. He's not wealthy, but he is reliable. I have got, the other expenses that I had is like close to $6,000 that I had already invested, which I don't have big money. But, I mean, the thing, I'm not, I just wanted to proceed if they would allow.
David?
Sir.
Step forward, please. Could you, could you give us a, just a quick update? Ms. Sharon's got, was giving us some, some quotes and stuff. Got some people in line to, to take, to take care of and try to get this place safe and habitable. And that was all, you know, that was what we were after, is your safety, you know, started with. From your office, are we satisfied to let her move forward with the, these licensed people? I got, I see Jimmy Woods, or seven different ones. Were we prepared to let them move forward and make these corrections?
The first obstacle is, the board will have to approve her to have a 14-foot wide trailer in the R2, which is a 16 minimum. That's what this, this is how all this started. When she came to us and we found out she had moved it down there, it's a 14-foot wide, and that is on the R2, which is a minimum of 16. And then when we went down and looked at it, we found out that the condition of the mobile home was in extremely bad condition. And she knew it, and she admitted it was. And this is what we put together to, Commissioner Stoltz gave her 90 days to come up with this. And these were bids to do some of the work. And there's some wordage in there that y'all need to look at. This comes up to a total of $11,000. Plus, Ms. Sharon has to provide the windows, the five windows that's going to go in the mobile home. That's not included in it. That's something she has to provide to move forward on that also.
Sharon, where are you living currently?
I, I stay at the camper, but I have went to my daughters to help her too, because I have eight grandkids. I kind of make my rounds a little bit. I do help them too. But, but I've been trying to, I've been on the phone a lot with trying to get these things together and such. I do have windows. I did find windows. And it's the right size, and they are trailer windows. I showed them to the contractor, and he seemed to be okay with it. But he said.
How much are they?
Huh?
How much are they?
I have done bought them.
Oh, you've already bought them?
Yes, they were $300,000.
Okay. So they're not included in your $11,000?
No, uh-uh.
So they don't need to be included.
So I guess, Ms. Sharon, one question I'd like to ask, and, and not to be nosy or anything, but what kind of timeframe are you thinking that you would be able to cover the cost of, of these repairs?
Well, the person who helped me before, I, I don't like to bother him, but I'm in a situation where I must go forward, and he doesn't want me to lose what I have either, lose my home. So he, he said he would help me, because I've always paid him back. I've known him for 30 years. And back in December, he almost passed away. He's 80 years old, and he almost passed away. But I, I actually took care of him. I spoon-fed him. I took him to the doctor and everything, but he's square dancing. He's doing great now. So, and he had to give up almost, and I said, we're not ready for you to give up. But he, he started, we started with the supplemental drinks and the, and I would feed him every day, but then he had to go back to the hospital, but then he ate. Actually, I convinced him. I said, well, if you don't have a taste for food, I said, eat it until you do get your taste back. And then he believed me, and he did. So.
I think we were maybe kind of thinking that things might have progressed a little faster than, than kind of where we're at right now.
Yeah.
And I think the other concern is, is that it's, it's two feet out of compliance. Is that correct? You know, that's, I think that's one of the biggest concerns as well. And I think there's a concern of how much longer this may, you know, continue, you know, knowing that we started this process in December, I do believe. And that was June. What do you guys have questions, input on it?
I agree with you.
I, I think, I think that's our biggest concern, is the, is the two-foot discrepancy that, that, that you would have to get for the variance. And the other concern would be, how much longer would this be drawn out?
I would, I would just add, Commissioner Stoltz, like I said, the, the timeframe is a concern, because the longer it sits without windows and things like that, then, you know, it, it just continues to dilapidate, and it doesn't, doesn't stop. But if you're moving forward, and you have, so these are quotes. You've not got any of this work done yet. You've not spent any of this money. The only thing you've spent so far is out of pocket, is for those windows that you purchased?
Well, I bought some wood too, but it's not compliant with what it's going to be. So he said that the contract's written up there. And my, my friend told me, he said, I, I don't want you to lose your trailer. I don't want you to lose it. He said, I will help you. And he, he was a banker, but he's, he's not, I, I don't like to bother him, but he's very, he, he's true to his word. And I don't want to bother him, but he, he knows I'll pay him back. I've always paid him back. I always will, I always have. He's my friend. He was my dad's friend also. And I'm a widow, and, and he, he preached my momma's funeral and my dad's funeral. He's a very good person. He is just my truest friend, one of my best friends.
I just want to add this. What if we get in writing or something, this guy's going to stand good for helping or, or something? I don't want to throw off on my fellow commissioners, but why did we put her through all this trouble two different times if we're worried about two foot? If we was worried about two foot in the front, we should have said, no, we're not going to do it. But we put her through all this trouble two different times, and her in the shape she's in, to now be worried about two foot? I mean, that's just where I'm at.
And I, and I think that all of us wanted to do all that we could to assist her so that she could get in, in her home. And, and, I mean, I, I think that's a very valid point.
But where I'm at, she's found somebody to help her with the finances. She's got this, and I don't blame her for not spending this money, not knowing what we're going to do.
Of course.
So I think she's found the money. She's got the price as we asked for. Now it's up to us to figure out how to move forward. That's my opinion.
What would be a reasonable timeframe, in your opinion, to look at giving her to be able to do these repairs?
I would refer to Mark on that, as I don't know anything about building, but I mean, I feel like we should probably put a timeframe and approve it on contingents that she completes these projects. So if she don't complete these.
Then it would, then it would have to be.
It's not approved. She's going to have to complete these, have them signed, and it's completed, and bring it to the planning office, and then they'll give her the.
And actually, David's office would go out and inspect the work and make sure that it was compliant. So, so it sounds like that we, and I hear, I hear both sides. And we have, we have asked her to, to, to come in with some, with a plan, and she's come in with a plan. The two-foot variance, I mean, that's something that we could, you know, we can do, that we do them, but that's not out of ordinary, you know, for certain situations. Maybe, like you said, maybe we could put a timeframe. In other words, allow the variance so that you can start, tell you, okay, we're going to allow you to keep this 14-wide there if you can complete this stuff within a, a reasonable timeframe. And I think reasonable on a situation like this, and we're talking about replumbing, rewiring, it's pretty, pretty much a gut on, on mobile home. Would you, would you feel like that six months is a reasonable timeframe? If you could get started to, to, to get things really moving forward?
Yes.
Do you feel comfortable six months, David, or?
I mean, you've seen the lines. Right. Usually a building permit is issued for one year. Right, there you go. So if you, if you want to go six months at a time and then reevaluate it after six months, see, she may run into some problems. If something can happen, that you're, you're, you may change, you know, something can happen, you may change your mind, or things may change, you know.
So is planning on David going out at six months?
Well, and when, when each contract is, we'll go out and inspect our work. But if, yeah, and then just report back at six months where our progress is. And if we're right there, and we're getting things done, and we're getting or close to getting in, then there's no problem to extend that. If the six months have gone by and we haven't been able to, to really do anything, then we've still got a 14-wide that's out of compliance, and it would be time to maybe look at that. I, I mean, I.
I think that sounds reasonable.
You know, I'm, I'm game with trying to, it's obvious she's trying hard to, to, and these, and the economics right now, I mean, you know, it's harder. I'll be honest with you, it's hard to even get certain material right now.
Yeah.
That's a fact. I mean, I run instructions, so I know that. But no, I, I wouldn't have any problem with that as well, I think. Brian, what do you, what do you think?
Yeah, y'all, all voting that way.
That would, yes.
You know, so.
So we'll go ahead and prove the variance.
On contingent.
Yes.
That, these are complete.
Okay.
Okay, so had some good discussion here, so just to try to bring some closure here. So I guess what we're looking for is a motion to approve the variance with the contingency of a review in six months.
With substantial progress.
With substantial progress.
That's fair.
And, but it may, but the building permit would be issued for, for 12 months.
Yeah, right.
That's our standard building permit.
That's right.
But we would need a substantial movement and update in, in six months and, and have you continue to, to work with David and Kristi.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so bear with us here just another couple of minutes, so we can do it officially. Okay. All right, so do we have a, a motion for what I just stated? Maybe these would have put it.
Motion for what you just stated.
Okay, so the motion is for a, for a variance, so you can get a building permit for 12 months with a six-month update.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we've got a motion.
Sir.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion or clarification? Okay, hearing done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing done. So that's been granted, and just continue to work with David and Kristi, and they'll help guide you through the rest of the way.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Sorry, it's been a long night. Okay, thank you. Okay, under new business, we do have a resolution R22-22 to consider the requests for the residents of Heritage Road subdivision to have their private roads accepted as county roads. Our road superintendent is here tonight as well. So Carlin Bowers, I think you have a report on this, or recommendation, or something to present, I believe?
Have you guys read any of this? You want me to read the whole thing?
I, I, yeah, we, it is just, just summarizing.
There are some areas of the road that indicate, indicate some subgrade failure. It's unclear of the detailed structure of the roads. I couldn't find any detailed plans on how they were constructed, what's there, what's not. Couldn't really make a good determine on if, determination if the, some areas looked like it was just binder, some areas looked like it had binder and topping down. My suggestion would, I recommend core drilling and a review of the core samples prior to the acceptance of the roads. There is a CTI engineering letter that states that milling would have to be done before any paving. Says if we bring it up two inches, it caused flooding in the rest of the neighborhood. I don't know how much flooding. I don't know what areas or anything like that, but there has been a letter, and it looks like they did this in 2015. So that core sample would tell us what to mill out and how deep to mill in order to pave, when that come about. The other thing, I would suggest that they seal coat it. That would seal coat everything, seal it off, so there's no more water getting into anything at by a couple of years before any decisions on paving had to be made. So just some core drills, get us some samples out of it, seal coat it.
So, so Carlin, yeah, we've talked about this numerous times, because we've been working on it together for quite some time, and I really appreciate the depth in which you've gone into this, looking for information that's just not there. So the, the, I have spoken with the HOA Association, and explained to them that we would like to see, you know, that we'd like to see some core drilling done so that we would have reference to when it's time to know how to, you know, where we were as far as, like you said, how deep we can mill, what we can do, da-da-da-da-da. And as well mentioned, the seal coating. I do know that right now, and you know better than I do, but I do know that right now the petroleum cost and all is way, way up there, you know, asphalt, petroleum sealing. But so I feel like that to go ahead and get the roads adopted, they've been working on this, you know, we've worked on it probably almost a year. I don't know how long, I'd have to look back. But and that would be contingent that we would get the core sampling done in a timely manner so that we would have it well before, and I would like to give them time. And I understand the seal coat process, and I explained it to them as well, that how that seals the cracks and you don't get water in and doesn't freeze. So, and they understand that. It's a financial burden as well, so like to give it an opportunity for maybe petroleum prices and maybe material to come down some in the future. We don't know. But I think that in my mind, I'd like to give them the benefit of the doubt and adopt the road because the roads have held up for over thirteen years, I think, or so. Of course, and it is a heavily, it's a...
Two thousand five.
Seventeen.
Seventeen years, thank you. So, and it's had a whole lot of heavy traffic. They're brick homes and concrete driveways. It's held up pretty well. Much better than a lot of our newer roads in the county we could go look at. So I would like to put it in a form of a motion to accept the road superintendent's advisement as far as having some core samples pulled for road department information to be on record. And then I would like to say that we would give them a minimum of a year to see what these petroleum prices are going to do before we would even expect them to try that. And then address it at that time, if, you know, if we haven't been able to, then we would look at it and address it from there. But I think that you've done a due diligence on it, and I think that would be a fair option for them. The residents there just kind of got held up. You never see any roads go seventeen years at a subdivision usually that haven't been asked for. But I think it all kind of started with the bankruptcy of a developer and it dropped, the ball got dropped. And so these people have come in and done their due diligence and taken ownership of, you know, of the roads and are trying to get it. So I feel like that in this situation, I'm very familiar with it, been working with Carlin and with HOA for quite some time. I think that to adopt the roads would be a fair move and then ask them to agree contingently to pull us the core samples that you would require, that we need. And ballpark me on about, you know what? I mean, we don't need to...
That's just something that I felt like we needed to do. Hadn't really drove or pulled any measurements to see where we needed to core drill. I would think in the areas that I'm, where I'm seeing some of this infrastructure, for sure. Intersections, I don't know. I mean, that's something that we...
We could go and look at it and then we could discuss, we could...
What I would like to do is maybe get Philip from Schofield, the people who do these core drills, Terricon, does it Terricon?
Yeah, Terricon's one of them.
So Terricon, they do this kind of studies and testing. They'd probably give us some recommendations on how far apart. I'm not imagining a whole...
No, that's what I'm saying. I'm going to go over there and start drilling holes until the road is held up for every...
I'm thinking in the intersections and then maybe a couple in the center, wherever, you know.
So we're proposing to adopt the road once the core drill is back. Is that correct?
Well, I'm proposing that we adopt the roads and that the HOA has agreed to do our core sampling and to surface treat the road.
So we adopt the road?
We're going to adopt it, that's what I'm saying. The core sample is going to be for the evidence and for their information as that road would come up, which, like I said, seventeen years. I didn't realize it was that long. That's what, about twice the life of what we get out of most of our new construction. Seven years, didn't you ever say? Seven to ten years is what we like to pave this cycle?
I don't know. Fieldstone is a good example. It's not that old and...
That's a real good example, and that's my point, is this has been in place for quite some time and it's still very well intact.
Why would we adopt it? I guess my question is, why would we adopt the core drill to see what needs to be done? If we're going to adopt it, why wouldn't we just...
Well, that would be so that we would know when it comes time for them to, if, when the time comes that the road has to be maintained or whatever, he would have a reference to what we do, because there's no record of what's, of the road's actual construction. He can't find where...
What I'm getting at is that last paragraph on that. So whatever that is that CTI had figured out, when it comes time to pave, we're not going to know how deep, tell our contractors how to pave.
Exactly.
Or how to mill, because it's got to be milled first. I'm sorry. Oh, so if we, before we do any work in there at all, if you guys decide to adopt them, before we go in and do any work at all, we'd have to have some core samples.
Well, you'd have to, right, right.
So, I guess.
As the road superintendent of Walker County, what would you advise us as a board of commissioners to do in a short second?
I'd advise them to get the core samples and to seal coat it.
Before we adopt it?
Well, that's y'all's decision.
I'm asking you as the road superintendent of Walker County, what would you advise us?
Well, I'd advise to do that before you adopted it.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, you can.
My name is Don Pittman, and I'm with the HOA. And I have not been living there since two thousand five. Moved in twenty eighteen. And I've got some concerns about the road. We've had several water pipes, mains burst. As recent as last week, we had a fire hydrant blow up in there. And it took four days to get somebody to come out and fix the leak. Now, we had water running from that fire hydrant all the way down that street. Muddy water, because it blew up the ground around it. We've had a water problem over on the far side of the pavilion area. And the county came in, I don't know if it was you or who, and they did mill that up. Side of the road about like that for about six houses. And the reason that I was given was water, you know, trying to get the water to route down to a drain that's down there. But the milling stopped about twenty feet from the drain.
I don't remember. I'm fairly certain that I was the one that was told to go over there to mill on a private drive at that time. I didn't know why. We got there, there were two paint marks. I was told to go from point A to point B, and that's what I did. So I didn't even know that was for...
Throwing that out there, that somewhere between two thousand five and now, that's taken place. We've had water pipes burst that the water department had to come in and redo driveways because the pipe went under those, and the asphalt at the end of the driveways was not repaired.
And the worst part, I've lived there since two thousand sixteen. And the worst part of our road is right now. There's a place in front of ninety-seven that the roads are kind of this way. And it's because the water underneath leaked for about a week before they were repaired. They came in and patched the pipe. The pipe got repaired, but nobody did anything about the road, and the road was damaged by the water company letting that leak run so long.
So that's the issues that we're dealing with, with the road. My question to you guys is, when a subdivision is developed, the ones that I'm familiar with anyway, not necessarily in Walker County, but other states even, within a matter of less than two years, the county or the city or wherever the municipality is owns the roads in there.
I don't believe it's that way.
Probably two thousand seven, somebody should have submitted a request for the county to own the road.
Yeah, generally speaking, I think when the development's about eighty percent, seventy-five to eighty percent, we're just about built out, and then the road has to hold up for over at least a year.
Well, in two thousand and five, in that phase, every house in there was finished.
In that phase?
Right. There were no available lots, no available houses in that particular phase. So that would have been, like, the date on that was two thousand five. So what period of time would that be? And now here we are in two thousand twenty-two, trying to get the county to take the roads. And now we've got to drill and make sure, you know, I mean, the roads were inspected when they were, I'm assuming, and they lasted for seventeen years. And now we got to go drill again on a worn road. I mean, I don't understand that.
Our roads are the best within five miles of our subdivisions. Our roads are better than any road in that, within five miles. You take Wilder Road, Wilder Road that we come off of to come in there, it's a fucking rockcoaster right now, that Wilder Road.
Would you agree with that, Carlin?
I'm sorry?
Wilder Road is narrow, and our roads are wider than the Wilder Road that we come off of.
Would you agree with that, Carlin?
Wilder is pretty messed up due to the sewer issues.
It's in my district, and I concur with everything they've said. I've watched, I've actually inspected most of the houses built in the subdivision when it was being built.
Second. Oh, is that a motion?
Yes.
Second. I mean, I agree.
Most motion, I say it's time to adopt the road.
Wilder Road is in pretty rough shape. Their roads are, the only reason I want to make...
I'm going to make a motion that we accept the road. And I don't have a problem with the core sampling at some point in time, so that we do know what we have. And I, but I, and I think that's fair, because we can't adequately service it unless we know what's there. And then as far as the seal coat, like I stated, I think that that should be contingent in, we will adopt the roads, that's, they will be required to do that. But I want to give them, economically, we need to give them an opportunity to see what the petroleum industry, and now if it doesn't come down and it gets to that point and it's got to be done, then it's got to be done. I mean, I...
Couple of things. Carlin, do you have any idea or is anybody here know? Has there been any cost estimates on the cost of the ceiling?
No, I have not reached out to call anybody to see what that is.
Do y'all have any idea of what the cost of the ceiling would be?
This is the first time we've heard that. Now, we started working on this road with Mr. Askew thirteen, fourteen months ago. And as a matter of fact, I think it was April when you came by and...
It's been quite some time, and we've worked, y'all have worked...
We've not heard one thing about that. Now, we've heard all, during that process.
Yeah, that's brand new.
We've heard this, or this, or this, and, you know, it just, it blows my mind. And I don't want to get outsourced here, but he's seen it.
Sort of like this one more, one more...
Yeah, I mean, we kicked the can one more time. I mean, these people that live in this subdivision are, the median age in there is seventy-eight.
And I'll be eighty-four next week.
Everybody in there is retired, pretty much. We've got one or two young folks in there that...
It's a very well-kept, very neat neighborhood, very well-kept. And like I said, I'm very familiar with the roads.
And it sounds to me like we presented a petition to get the roads taken over, and now it sounds like, okay, well, you guys need to drill so that we'll know what we're going to need to do later on. If you had already taken the roads and you were three years into the ownership of the roads and you felt like you had to go do some work on those roads, would you not go in and drill?
That's not the situation. I mean, it's not the county's fault of how the developer went bankrupt. It's not the county's fault...
But it is...
That the homeowner, let me finish, that the homeowners association didn't come forward in a prompt manner years ago and request for the county to adopt the road. And the responsibility is going to be on the taxpayers of Walker County to maintain your roads in a subdivision that has no outlet. You can't go on your roads to get anywhere except in your subdivision. So the core drilling, no. Normally, it wouldn't be required, but your developer never followed the proper county procedures that were in place at that time to have it inspected and approved and to get the roads up to smother. I mean, that's why you're having the core...
So our develop, the guy that went by the road didn't have any inspections by you guys?
None that I could find.
Let me ask you again. So our developer did not have any county inspections on our development that we're living in right now?
No, no, I can't speak to the roads. Like I said, I can speak to that. I personally inspected probably half of those units that are built in there now when I was a building official and building inspector for the county.
But nobody inspected the road?
Nothing that I could find.
I can't speak to it, and he can't find any documentation of it, so...
Typically, that is documented and it's on an approved plat, I believe.
I would be amazed if there had been no road inspection.
I don't think that it was built without any inspection myself, but if I had to produce documentation, I don't have it.
Well, I was a commercial bank officer for fifty-two years, and I financed a lot of developments, and I've never once seen one that the county or city or whoever was governing body did not do road inspections, home inspections, sewer inspections. Everything that there was to be inspected in that development was done. Now, whether no records were kept, I don't have a clue. The letter that you included in here, we had nothing to do with that. We didn't order that. We didn't pay for it. That was all done by BB.
And that was due diligence on her part?
I don't know that to be true.
Engineer to come out.
I don't know that to be true.
The truth of the matter is, is that your estimate four or five years ago was three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. I'm sure that it's at least two to three times out of now to repair.
And it was seven years...
And you're asking Walker County to take that over and responsibility for it.
You've heard my piece. I mean, I don't, I don't understand the resistance. But, because I know there are others that don't have access, roads going everywhere in there.
I believe there are sixty-two voters in our subdivision, and they vote. And so they're going to be very disappointed if this is not ruled.
Okay, just to get us on order, I know Commissioner Askew was, Commissioner Harpers tried to make a motion, but just to kind of get us in where we need to be, this actually is a resolution. So let me read this resolution, and then if we need to make modifications or however y'all want to take that order. But let me read the resolution so we're all on the point of order here. Okay, Resolution R-022-22, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to accept Heritage Drive, South Heritage Drive, and West Heritage Drive as public roads as set forth here within. Whereas Heritage Drive, South Heritage Drive, and West Heritage Drive are existing private roads located in the unincorporated portion of Walker County. And whereas all the owners whose property abuts Heritage Drive have filed a petition requesting the county accept Heritage Drive as a public road. And whereas Heritage Road Homeowners Association, HOA, is the owner... is the owner of South Heritage Drive and West Heritage Drive. And the members of the HOA have approved and authorized the president of the HOA to file a petition requesting the county accept South Heritage Drive and West Heritage Drive as public roads. And that the president of the HOA has filed said petition with the county. And whereas the county road superintendent has submitted for his recommendation that the Board of Commissioners regarding the county accepting of Heritage Drive as South Heritage Drive and West Heritage Drive as public roads. Whereas the Board of Commissioners has reviewed all relevant documents, fact, and circumstances regarding the proposed acceptance of Heritage Drive, South Heritage Drive, and West Heritage Drive as public road. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the county accept Heritage Drive, South Heritage Drive, and West Heritage Drive as public roads pursuant to the following. Number one, the county ha, excuse me, the county shall be responsible for the maintenance and necessary repairs of Heritage Drive, South Heritage Drive, and West Heritage Drive from the inside curb of one side of the road to the other inside curb of the road. In consideration, number two, in consideration of the county being responsible for the actions set forth in number paragraph one above, the owners of the properties that abut Heritage Drive and the HOA that owns South Heritage Drive and West Heritage Drive shall retain ownership and shall remain responsible for the maintenance and necessary repairs to the stormwater infrastructure and the sidewalks on Heritage Drive, South Heritage Drive, and West Heritage Drive that are outside of the inside curb of said road. The property owners of the HOA shall execute one or more of the deeds to the county conveying their portion of Heritage Drive, South Heritage Drive, and West Heritage Drive that are described in the number paragraph one above, subject to the provisions of the number in paragraph two above. So, resolved and adopted the 26th day of May 2022. So, reading this, any of these conditions that we've talked about at the board's pleasure are not in this resolution at this time. So, I think to keep us on good order and point, we would need a motion on this resolution. And if there's any modifications to this resolution, that would need to be stated in the motion.
I, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion to accept the roads of, of Heritage Drive.
So, your motion is to accept the resolution as presented?
That's what, that's exactly right.
Okay, just want to make sure I was clear. So, Commissioner Askew has made a motion to accept the resolution R 22 dash 22 as presented with no modifications. Do we have a second to that motion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. So, by doing that, then we won't core drill the road or seal coat it? Is that correct?
That is the motion, correct. The motion is no, uh, no requirements on the homeowners. It's as presented, that the county would just accept him as is.
It's the, as, as was stated, it's, the, the roads there are in better, is, is better shape than anything probably, and I would almost go with a five-mile radius. So, I, I, you know, we're going, I just, I just feel like that, uh, that the homeowners have, you know, that, like I said, they didn't drop the ball, and then we didn't drop the ball, but the roads have held up. The proof's in the pudding, and so, I, I just, I, I, that's my motion.
I know this is a little bit of a, of a technicality. I do agree with you that Wilder Road is, is a little bit of a roller coaster where they put in sewers years ago, and the compaction of that was not where it needed to be. But I, I think if everybody will recall back in, I believe it was 2018, we did a lot of deep mill and patching on Osburn Road and completely resurfaced Osburn Road, uh, you know, which was be closer than the five miles. I know that's a little technicality, but I do agree that there are other roads around that beat what you're talking about. But we did pave Osburn Road as a main.
Yeah, I agree that Osburn Road is better.
Okay.
Mr. Ridge, your five points.
Yeah, and five points, right, this road.
That's the ones we paved.
This road.
I'll second the motion so we get back to the topic.
Okay, so, well, we've got a motion and a second to accept these roads in Heritage State as presented in the resolution. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion of the board? All right, hearing none, I'm a hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, any opposed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am, praise the Lord.
Motion carries unanimously.
Happy year of birthday.
Yeah, June the 10th, 2024.
Go celebrate.
Thank you all so much.
Thank y'all for being here, and sorry it's taking so long. We just had a busy night.
You'll forgive us for leaving our.
Absolutely, completely understand, no problem. Okay, the next item we have is a resolution R 23 dash 22. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint the members of, a member of the Department of Family Children's Services, DFAX Local County Advisory Board. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. Whereas OCGA 49 dash 3 dash 2 provides that the governing authority, the responsibility to appoint members to the local county Department of Family Children's Service Board. That said governing authority shall ensure all appointments are made from specific categories within the community. And whereas one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members to the, to all committees of the board with the approval of the board. And whereas Chairman Woodfield submitted the following appointments to serve as member of the Department of Family Children's Services, DFAX, Local County Advisory Board. Pepper Stanfield for a term immediately and ending on June 30th, 2025. Whereas pursuant to OCGA 49 3 dash 2, Pepper Stanfield is duly qualified to serve as a member of the DFAX Local County Advisory Board and is agreeable to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint, uh, Pepper Stanfield is approved, so resolved and adopted the 26th day of May. I will add that Pepper Stanfield is a current member. So, in essence, this is a reappointment, and this is a recommendation, first of all, that I received from the DFAX Board Director, asking and requesting that Pepper Stanfield be reappointed. And I, I concur and make that motion that we do reappoint Pepper Stanfield to this, uh, Community DFAX Board.
Second.
Okay, so we have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved unanimously. Okay, I'm, I'm not going to read this resolution again. We've got the next one here. It's Resolution R 24 22. It says the same thing. This is another appointment for the DFAX Board. The only thing that has changed is the name. For sake of time, I'm not going to read it unless someone thinks we should. Uh, Anne Goodson, this also is a reappointment. She's currently on this board. The director has asked also and requested for the reappointment. So, I make the motion for this reappointment.
Second.
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next item we have is Kerry Davis requests a rezone from A1 to R2 for property located at 9391 West Highway 136, Chico Mago, Georgia, tax map impartial 0 dash 255 dash 007B. No one spoke on this one tonight. It was submitted over to us from the Planning Commission where they did hear this on 5/19/2022. And their recommendation for this board is to approve as submitted. So, is any discussion of the board?
It was an unanimous vote to approve.
Okay, unanimous vote to approve this, uh, from an A1 to an R2 rezone.
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to approve this. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it's approved as submitted from the Planning Commission. Okay, our next action item on our agenda. Eugene Hester requests a partial rezone from R2 to C1 for property located at 126 Black Circle Spur at Highway 27, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial, number 0 dash 329 dash 1 dash 021A. Mr. Hester was here tonight and spoke. There was no opposition. The Planning Commission has sent this over, uh, on, showing on 5/19. Approved with conditions. Approved to rezone from R2 to C1 from Highway 27 West to Black Circle, south to the Highland Drive as partial, 0 dash 329 dash 2 dash 002 and 0329 dash 2 dash 004. So, what's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve with the conditions, correct?
As, as presented.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this is granted. As the, presented with the conditions. Okay, the, uh, next item on our agenda is for, uh, public comments. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the board and the staff on any topic tonight? Okay, we'll move forward. There's no public comments additional at this time. The next item on our agenda is for commissioner comments. So, Mr. Blakemore.
Appreciate everybody coming out tonight and being involved in your government. If I can ever help, call, text, or email, thank you.
I, I, same. I appreciate the, the patience, a great informational, uh, night. We've covered several bases, and we've got some good information. We've got some good input from citizens, and that's what it takes for us to do our job. So, thank you for that, uh, and call, text, or email.
I do appreciate the mission. If anybody's still up watching, uh, tomorrow is graduation day in Walker County. I talked with that high school principal yesterday. Their graduation rate is tracking around the mid-90s, which is about 10% above the state average. So, really proud of those folks there at the high school. And I know Ridge is graduating tomorrow, so.
And Gordon Lee.
Gordon Lee is tomorrow. I was like, okay, yes. So, just remember those folks in your prayers that are stepping out in the world.
Amen, good, good call.
Taking a big step. And also, five of the graduates from Lafette High School are enlisted in the military.
Awesome.
Hats off to those young people stepping out there in search. June 4th, which is a week from Saturday, is the hunting festival in Lafette, Georgia. It's free to everybody. So, it goes on from nine in the morning to midnight. So, you're going to be here all day. They're going to have car shows, concerts, and everything else. And in closing, I want to mention that Monday is Memorial Day, and.
Veterans Memorial Day.
It's Memorial Day, yeah, veteran, yeah.
Veterans Memorial Day.
Yeah, um, so, just to remember that, you know, since World War II, since World War I, rather, 530,000 people have died defending this country so we can do the things that we do, and go to church, go to school, and also have a government that we can discuss. And just as you celebrate, remember those folks that have passed away. Also, 192 of those were, uh, from Walker County. So, yeah.
Thank you, sir. So, just want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I certainly appreciate all the hard work that our county employees do. Thank y'all very much. Uh, and I'm going to do some repeats here. So, congratulations to all of our area graduates, best wishes. And also, Memorial Day weekend, I, uh, you know, just encourage everyone just to take a moment to reflect, um, remember those servicemen and veterans who paid the ultimate sacrifice and, uh, and gave their lives for our country. Hope everyone has a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to echo, appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I know there's been a lot of people watching, and there'll be a lot of people watching this video in the next coming days. It's very much an honor to serve at these seats here. I know everyone agrees with that, and, uh, we just appreciate everybody being involved in the local government. I know this has been a, a long meeting, but I think it's been a very productive meeting and a very important meeting for our community. And I want to thank those that came out tonight and those that, uh, give, uh, comments during the comment time as well. So, at this time, the next item on our agenda, we need to have an executive session from the attorney. Okay, any other need for executives?
Yes, I would like to go into the executive session. For one personnel matter, it will take five minutes.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hart, and a motion, and a second from Commissioner Askew to go into executive session to.
For five minutes. Add that in, it's five minutes.
It will be.
Commissioner, let me wear your little clock this year.
If it's not five minutes, it won't be my fault.
All right, so we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will stand adjourned to our executive session.
For five minutes.
Okay, we're, uh, back in our meeting. It is still Thursday, May the 26th, 2022. It's at 10:49. We just exited our, uh, executive session, probably the fastest one in history. And, uh, as committed, uh, so there's no further action to come at this time from the executive session. So, do we have a motion to finalize and adjourn this meeting here tonight?
Motion.
We have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.